Council here tonight, no absences. As the presiding, hold on. Is that your phone? No, okay. All right, as a presiding officer of this meeting, one of my duties is to maintain an appropriate and professional atmosphere to conduct the business of the city. Statements made during the meeting, no matter to whom they are directed, must be made with the utmost respect and dignity of others. It has become apparent that when anyone during a meeting speaks in a manner other than with dignity and respect for others, it distracts from and interferes with the council's efforts to conduct city business in an efficient and effective manner. Such conduct during our meetings will be admonished, called out of order, and the speaker will lose the floor. Any repeated conduct by a city council member at the same meeting will result in that person losing their eligibility to be recognized to speak beyond one minute per any item on the agenda, other than to make a motion, second a motion, or participate in a voice vote on any item. Councilman Hicks, could you please lead us in the invocation?
Thank you, Mayor. Every father, thank you for today. Thank you for bringing us together to make decisions on behalf of our citizens, watch over our first responders as they take care of us and take care of our city, watch over our men and women in the service, and watch over their families. In these things we pray, amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and do the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have a presentation of award recognitions. The first one is five-year service award to Nicole Perez. Where's Nicole at? Come on down.
Come on down.
Come up to the podium if you don't mind, Nicole. Okay, thank you. Mr. Reed, do you have a, I'm going to come up to the podium. Okay.
Members such as yourself, and we want to recognize the contributions you have made in helping us achieve our goals. You are a valued team member of the City Manager's Office, the executive team, and Team Siblo. During your two years in the Public Works Department, you were instrumental in writing a grant to TCEQ, that's the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, for fleet replacement that resulted in the city receiving two new duck trucks valued at $141,000. Now, I'm going to pause, I'm going to ad lib here, and, Tim, what are those trucks called? What, don't they have nicknames? Okay, he doesn't have to answer it, but they do have nicknames. Conducting an inventory of radios to account for assets, managing the city's MS4 annual report and permit process, supporting the department director and others, and much more. You also received the Employee of the Quarter Award in 2019. Over the past three years in the City Manager's Office, you have been instrumental in the success of many initiatives and projects, including the facilitation and/or coordination of the values building workshops. That's in 2021. We followed up with that with mission building workshops in 2022 and engagement talk workshops in 2024. You accepted assignments on the FY22 Annual Budget Development during the absence of a finance director, a time that required all hands on deck so that we could produce and work with the city council on producing a budget without a key member of an executive team. I greatly appreciated the sacrifices you made and other employees made to step up and do things that were outside of job responsibilities. And played an instrumental role in the coordination and organization of council strategic management workshops, employee town halls, and resident town halls. Your professionalism has set a standard to represent the City Manager's Office with exceptional administrative support to the city council, the City Manager's Office, the executive team, and the entire organization. Lastly, your attitude, accomplishments, and teamwork skills have contributed to you being awarded an Employee of the Year Award in 2022 and being a member of a Team of the Year Award in 2022. You demonstrated your commitment to professional development by graduating from the Chamber Leadership Core Class of 2023. Your dedication and service have been instrumental in our journey to building an organization of excellence. To honor your service, we present to you this five-year service award plaque. People are and always will be our greatest asset. Please know that you are an important member of our team, and your abilities and contributions will be an important part of our continued success. Thank you for everything that you have done during these past five years and for your ongoing commitment to our success. Hope that this award will remind you, just in a small way, of the value you bring and how much we value you. Thank you.
Come on up. Bring your family on up.
And then, did you want to do one more? Yes, okay. Next is Fire Chief Mario Truncosso. And I'm also giving you a five-year service award plaque. So I'm just going to pause because I was going to do it while reading the letter, but I'll just say now, Mario, I'm just going to call him by Mario right now because I'm really just speaking to a human being here, was born in Siblo. His family really is from Siblo. And it's really odd that I'm giving him a five-year service plaque, and you know why? He volunteered with the Siblo Volunteer Fire Department from 1991 until we no longer had a volunteer fire department in 2019. He was hired to be our fire chief in 2019. So it's not really just five years of service to our community, it's since 1991. That's an incredible enduring legacy to our community. Now I get to read your letter, Chief Truncosso. All right, Dear Mario, congratulations. On behalf of everyone at the City of Siblo, I want to congratulate you on the fifth anniversary of your employment, again, as a full-time paid employee. You joined our organization on October 1st, 2019, as fire chief. This year signifies a key milestone in your service, and we would like to celebrate your achievements with you today. We know that the growth and success of our departments and organization is dependent on having devoted and capable team members such as yourself, and we want to recognize the contributions you have made in helping us grow into the organization we are today. You're a valued team member of the fire department, the executive team, and Team Siblo. You embody the mission of the department, that is, to respond with courage and compassion while serving our community with honor. You have been instrumental in the evolution of the city's fire services from a volunteer force to a full-time professional force by implementing the fire department's strategic plan, most recently helping the city to improve its fire ISO from a 3.3X to a 2.2X. For all of you in the room, this is the rating that the communities have based upon not just the fire department, but there's other factors such as our water system and training. But Mario's been working at this strategic plan since he began as our fire chief, and so we recently were elevated because one is the best. We were elevated from a 3.3X rating to a 2.2X rating, and ultimately, it makes a difference in the protection of property and life. You have promoted mutual and cooperative fire protection services through inter-local government agreements with Guadalupe County and the City of Shertz to provide efficient and professional fire protection for our residents and businesses. You have elevated the leadership of the department to meet the growing demands for fire protection by creating and filling three battalion chiefs and providing professional development for all members of your department so that they can better serve and protect the community. You have always represented the City of Siblo as a, you have also represented the City of Siblo as a guest instructor at numerous Texas A&amp;M, I'm going to argue so, I love that he goes there, Engineering Extension Service Annual Municipal Fire School. You have demonstrated a commitment to professional development, including attendance at the Texas A&amp;M, just keeps going back to the aggluree, leadership development symposiums, as well as seeking, get this, everyone, he's a full-time fire chief, he has a daughter at home, a loving wife, responsible for the men and women that he supports, and just, again, the entire organization. And what Chief Truncosso is doing right now is he is pursuing his Bachelor of Applied Arts in Science in Fire and Emergency Services Administration. Again, you're representing the commitment to, in this organization, under our core values of professional development for doing that. You have championed training of city staff in incident command system and national incident training system in 2022 to ensure we're prepared when an incident occurs in our community. You serve as our emergency management coordinator. Your dedication and service have been instrumental in our journey to organizational excellence. To honor your service, we present you with this five-year service award. People are and always will be our greatest asset. Please know that this is a small token of our appreciation for the service you have given us and the service that I know you will continue to give us. Thank you for everything that you have done during these past five years of service. I look forward to the next five years of service and for your ongoing commitment to our success. We hope that this award will remind you of our appreciation for your hard work and dedication.
Can I get a photo with the fire department family in the background?
Absolutely.
Come on, guys.
Do you want to test with your man? You want the mayor and I to stand? Okay. Congrats again, Nicole and Mario. Great job on five years of excellent service to the City of Siblo. Thank you. Next up, we have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, read by Councilwoman Katie Cunningham.
A proclamation to designate the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas Domestic Violence Victims are not confined to any group or groups of people and does not discriminate based on socioeconomic status, gender, or age, whereas Domestic Violence is a systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse and control that violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity. And whereas Domestic Violence Victims are oftentimes children who suffer lifelong effects from exposure to the emotional and physical trauma of domestic violence. And whereas Domestic Violence Victims exhibit astounding strength, courage, and resilience as they overcome significant barriers to escape domestic violence. And whereas Domestic Violence Victims served by the Crisis Center of Comal County are viewed as more than a statistic, they are a family member, a neighbor, a coworker, and a friend whose torturous struggle has affected our society as a whole, making the journey of prevention essential toward ending the debilitating cycle of domestic violence. And whereas all Texans must take action to eradicate domestic violence through a committed dedication to extraordinary advocacy on behalf of victims by being their voice and raising awareness. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to remember and honor victims by guiding them to safety, nurturing their healing, and securing their freedom by providing them hope through a safety net of services that include crisis shelters, childcare, counseling, legal advocacy, and case management. Now therefore, I, Mark Allen, Mayor of Siblo, on behalf of the Siblo City Council, staff, and citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage our citizens to join the Crisis Center of Comal County, allied professionals, and domestic violence survivors in mourning the many lives lost to domestic violence and to celebrate our unified progress that could not have been made without the strength of our connection and victim advocacy.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Cunningham. So there are four people that we have listed on this agenda item that I'd like to invite to come down to the podium, and then Councilwoman Cunningham and I are going to come down here to present the proclamation to you. We have Ms. Montoya, Ms. Hinosa, and Ms. Strintech, I'm so sorry if I can't pronounce your name right, and then Ms. K E P C Y K, Keppik, okay, come on down. All right, we'll be right there. So what we're going to do is take a quick picture here, and then we'll have all four of you, you know, say something if you wish, or if you don't want to say anything at all, I mean, it's up to you at the podium.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. A little bit more about your organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Siblo City Council, for this important proclamation as we recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I apologize. The impact of domestic violence is devastating. In 2023, 205 Texans were killed by intimate partners, including 179 women, 26 men, and four LGBTQ victims. Heartbreakingly, 218 children and adults lost a parent due to domestic violence. At the Crisis Center of Comal County, we are committed to providing support and safety. In 2024, we served 1,280 individuals and provided over 24,000 services through our shelter advocacy and counseling programs. Looking to the future, we are excited that our new shelter, set to be completed in the fall of 2025, will allow us to serve even more families in need. If you are interested in learning more or getting involved, please reach out to us through our website at crisiscenternb.org. Additionally, we are hosting a Domestic Violence Vigil this Wednesday, which is tomorrow, at 6:00 PM at the Main Plaza in New Braunfels. We hope you can join us, and again, thank you.
And thank you very much for coming out tonight, and also thank you very much for all the lives that your organization touches to help people through just a traumatizing, just a terrible, terrible experience that people unfortunately go through, not only in Texas but throughout the world. So we just can't say enough good things about what you have the heart to do. So thank you. All right, next up, we're going to skip down to 10B because we have a resolution that we need to give, I believe, sent over via fax or something like that tonight, like immediately. So we're going to go to 10B. Approval/disapproval of a resolution of the City of Siblo nominating a candidate to the Guadalupe County Appraisal District for election to the Board of Directors. And this is for the appraisal district. And so I've nominated Dick Hetzel, and so is there, can we get a motion to add Dick to this?
I'll make a motion to have Dick represent.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. I guess we can vote on our screens here.
He's done it before, so I.
Yeah, exactly. So this would be a good fit for him. Okay, and so Dick did abstain, which is fine, and so the motion passed six to zero. Okay. All right, and now we're going to, we're going to jump back up and do Citizens to Be Heard, and we are going to add two items after Citizens to Be Heard to get done rather quickly because Randy does have some things to do tomorrow morning. I don't want to get too much into details, but anyway, we're going to do that. So going back up to item seven on the agenda, Citizens to Be Heard, this is the only time during the council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is the opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The city council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. Per Attorney General Opinion JCO 169, limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is livestreamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the City of Siblo or on an agenda item and have this item read at the meeting, please email psemics@siblotx.gov and vchapman@siblotx.gov, or call us at 210-566-6111 before 5:00 PM, the date of the meeting. And so we do have quite a few people signed up to speak. So we're going to start with, I think it's Sherlene Shears, if I'm saying that correctly?
Yes.
Ms. Shears, come on up.
Is it possible that I go after these two?
Sure, and these two, and these two are, what's your name, sir?
Same subject, Ismael.
It's the same subject.
Okay, your name is Ismael Edwards, and then we have your daughter, Gull Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so go ahead, Ismael, come on up.
So I want to submit this petition on behalf of my federal, excuse me, my residents that live in my area. I live in Siblo, I've been here for about 15 years, and I live on Royal Troon Drive. So this particular road has become pretty much almost undrivable at this moment, and I think it's a safety hazard to anybody driving in that particular area due to the manholes or roof is high on the surface of the street.
Which road are you describing again?
Royal Troon Drive.
Could you say that one more time?
Royal.
Oh, Royal Toon, Troon, okay. That's over in your neighborhood, right? Okay, thank you.
So basically, once you get off of Baitwood Ranch Drive and take a left, it's right there. So anyways, it's probably about three, it's about 500 feet of road that is, that's pretty much crumbling to the, it's just, for a person that's coming to our area for the first time, they would probably damage their car because they don't know about the way the road is right now situated because it's so bad over there. And I have the petition here, and I have some photos of it also, and I think it needs to be addressed soon, very soon.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. And so we'll go ahead and have the others come up and speak, and then I'll make a factual statement in response. And so next we have, is it Yerdigal Edwards? Is that how I pronounce it? Okay, welcome, Yerdigal.
Yes, that was my husband actually talking, so I just wanted that couple things. Like he was saying that the road is undrivable at this time, up to the point we are not feeling comfortable having company over. We are actually very embarrassed to have anyone over to our space because this door, actually, we had a couple friends and family members having, making fun of the road, like I felt like I was on a roller coaster. So we would appreciate your attention to that road.
Absolutely, thank you very much. So we'll go back up to, is it Sherlene Shears? Welcome, Shears. Hello.
There are five roads that feed Royal Troon Valley, so consequently, there are 135 residences with about 260 vehicles that drive every day. I didn't include the service vehicles of Amazon, FedEx, and the like. So the road is not just a nuisance issue on a minor scale, on a much more major scale, it's a vehicle damage scale, but on a major scale, I want to talk about safety. My focus is safety, particularly traffic safety. People drive, that are supposed to drive on the left, drive on the right, and vice versa. But most importantly is, I'm really worried about physical injuries. If you drive a Corvette, a low-line vehicle, and you do the speed limit, nothing more, you absolutely will bounce around in that vehicle. My son has a 2013 Hyundai Genesis Coupe. If I ride in the back and he does the speed limit, my head literally hit his ceiling. I know he did it on purpose, but, so we're talking about physical damage. It's not just a nuisance or violence, it's literally physical damage. As a retired Army Nurse Corps officer, I've taken care of lots of injuries. I'm talking about paralizations, broken teeth, concussions, the like, because of the physical damages that occur inside that vehicle. So I really think the city should look at the budget to fix that, not just from a nuisance or a vehicle, but just from a safety issue. Also, I took the liberty to speak to the waste management driver and ask him, did it impact his ability to do his job? And he told me that in that vehicle that day, he just has to drive slow. But if he drives the vehicle called a cab over, it has a low suspension system, almost little to none, and that he has to drive, in his words, at a snail's pace so my helper won't fall off the back of that vehicle. So if I could say, please take a look at that road because it's not just a nuisance. And also, let me say this, as a resident since 2005, I want to thank the leadership here. This is my first time here, so you guys are doing an amazing job. And secondly, giving me the opportunity to tell you my concerns as a citizen. One, it's not just a nuisance, it's not just your damage to your vehicle, but it is a traffic, safety, and a physical harm in safety issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shears. We hear you loud and clear. And our city manager is sitting right over there at the table to your right when you're looking at the dais, and so I know that Mr. Reed has notated the name of the street, Royal Troon. And so we do have what's called a CIP list, which is our capital improvements list, capital improvements projects. And so several of us that you see up here on this dais, we serve on that subcommittee, and part of our job is to take a look at all the streets in Siblo and to look at the road conditions as well as the amount of traffic that these streets get. And so right now, when we had our CIP list put together originally, I think it had over $100 million worth of projects on there. And so our budget per year is, I think, right around $50 million. And so that includes all the salaries for all the staff and every, so even if we were to shut everything down and provide zero services for the entire citizenry of Siblo, it would take two years to go and fix all these roads. And so because of that constraint, you know, we do have to prioritize the roads based upon road conditions and then also traffic count. So roads that have a high traffic count and poor road conditions, those rise to the top of the list. of the list. But we do hear you loud and clear as far as this particular street, and we'll make sure that we, that we take a look at it and, and do what we can do to fix it. Yes, ma'am, did, did you wanna speak again? I think you have a little bit of-
I have a question regarding your-
If you can come up to the podium if you wanna say something.
I have a, regarding your capital expense budget, do you have an order of priority? For instance, I think human life and land will out, will trump modernization budgets and stuff like that. Is that the case? I don't know how the order of priority, also furthermore, the actual severity of the impact. You have 135 homeowners impacted. I don't know what projects to schedule versus, like, a project that's about the same where there's like five people.
I can speak on this.
Okay, go ahead, Katie.
So, in 2019, we had a road condition or pavement study, where they went around Sibolo, looked at all the roads, and said, these are the worst roads in Sibolo. At that point, we had a hundred million dollars in road repairs needed. It's been five years, and the roads have gotten significantly worse. I live in Stonebrook, we just have two streets. We complained for years that we were a cut through, we needed speed bumps. And now the roads are so bad, we have built-in speed bumps, they came to us whether we wanted them or not. We are having the same issues with potholes. Town Creek, that neighborhood's having the same, or not potholes, excuse me, manholes. I keep saying potholes, but I mean manholes. The Town Creek, that neighborhood is also having issues. So unfortunately, it's a citywide issue because of our soil. It shifts and flexes so much, so we have foundation issues, we also have road issues. So we are working on that. The capital improvement projects list that the mayor was speaking of, you can actually find that on our website, and it will show you, and there's, like, it tells you by fiscal year which projects have been prioritized. Those are usually really big projects. Mr. Reed has done a really good job updating our budget to increase the amount that we're spending on the mill and overlay type projects, the, the maintenance, not repair. Some roads have to be totally torn out, others can just be repaired. So when he first started, our annual budget for maintenance on roads was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And we should be around four million. So we've gotten up to, are we at a million this year, or is it 750,000?
So realistically speaking, if I understand you right, it's probably around four or five years before our road-
For a full repair, it would be dependent on the CIP.
Well, not even a full repair, just literally just the beginning where those, they're really not even potholes, where craters are.
Yes.
Okay, so, so Mr. Reed, so do you also, just so you know, the format, we, we really can't do a back and forth because this item isn't necessarily on the agenda, but, but you, you're welcome to stand there, but Mr. Reed wants to make a comment, and then we'll close the item.
Mayor and council, so I was just evaluating the pictures, and also I was texting with Julio Gomez, our CIP manager. So I think there are two things going on here. One is, like many, like the entire council in your districts, you can find the roads that are in horrible shape, and we are doing a better job of increasing our funding to restore and rehabilitate our roads. That is part of our five-year CIP, and you make a decision on what roads we improve. The second issue that's going on right here is that the manhole has, on this street, Royal Troon Drive, has lifted, and it is creating that safety issue. So I was, again, texting with Julio to determine, can we not fix the manhole right now? So he will prioritize this with his street crew. I'm not saying it'll get done in the next week, but we'll be in touch with the residents that have spoken tonight to let you know that we will have a fix to the manhole. That gets rid of the most immediate safety issue that has been brought to our attention, and I do appreciate you raising this to us. So I will let council know when we're able to fix that manhole. The street itself will be a subject for the council CIP subcommittee, and when we come back to council in January, February of next year, just to start talking about the next list of streets, Royal Troon Drive may be one of those, or it may be somewhere below the next FY26 list of roads. I hope I've helped in this discussion to clarify the facts.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you very much, too, for also utilizing C Click Fix. I went on there to see if they had been reported, and they have, so thank you for that. That makes me very happy.
All right, we're gonna move on. I see Mr. Bob Roberson in the room tonight. Come on up, Bob.
I don't know if that's a good thing to be known like that or not. As y'all know, I don't come up here very often because I'm not a resident of Sibolo. I come when there's things to discuss, other than maybe to accuse the two council people who talked me into Green Valley. And that, that's okay. I've enjoyed every minute of it, and one of the greatest things I look forward to is we are no longer in any litigation. You know, yes, that was a mutual thing for all of us. But what I'm here to talk about tonight is the Lower Seguin Road projects. Specifically, I'll start with Phase Two, which is ongoing, and ongoing, and ongoing. That section started the eighth of August. It's still ongoing, there's nowhere near finished. They're beginning to put matting down now, who knows? They say another three to four weeks, and it's like, they're compacting, and compacting, and compacting, and how much does that need to be done? They just, they just need to get finished. One of the things, the lime slurry is down, that's great, the road is very, very hard. They keep remixing it and rolling it, and it's like, come on, it, it's done already. Part of the problem is, there is, and I don't know if you're aware of it or not, I'm not asking for feedback, this is informational. There's a four-person crew working on that road. The crew member has said, we wish we had a second crew, but it ain't happening. I've never seen more than four people out there. Just more attention on CIP, and I'm giving it from the resident's perspective. I know you're gonna get a briefing from CIP later on, but this is our perspective, and it's just not happening, just not happening. The other thing I wanna bring up, to discuss, because we've got time, is Phase Three is between South and North Haverhill. And I've talked to the project manager out there. They say that 150-yard section is gonna take three weeks. Three weeks, think about that, for 150 yards, even for milling. That, that's just too long. Plus, they've told me that they are going to close it off during the day for all access, but no ramps, and it's gonna be inaccessible all day long. Because I specifically brought up, well, what about the Thanksgiving holiday that's coming up real soon? And it'll be in construction. There's five homes that live there, two businesses that are there. How are they supposed to get in and out? They proposed to close that thing off at seven in the morning and open at seven at night. The other sections have had ramps where the, the residents and any deliveries and stuff can get through. What about mail service? What about trash service? What about Amazon, anything like that? I, I think you really need to consider that, and I'm not saying you. It, it really needs to be looked at to like, if they can keep the other sections open, they need to look at this to keep a way to keep this open. Because this is the most central, thoroughfare part of South Sibolo. It's, it's just unacceptable that that be closed off for three weeks during normal business hours. They, they can do better.
Thank you for the feedback on DND Construction, Bob. You know, like, like you know, that, that is a, a company that won the bid, and, and they're, they're the ones that are in charge of the contract and the, and the road work.
Right.
So thank you for the feedback.
Well, and I would ask, and I know I'm out of time, are there any milestones to this contract?
Um, you would, I see, we would, I guess, we'd get with, Mr. Reed, if you could put him in touch with-
If they're not, they, they should be.
We, we do have milestones, we do have a contract timeline. Julio Gomez is here tonight. If we wanna share facts, we could do that very quickly, but what I'm happy to do is have Julio, myself, sit down with you and just give you more information. I, I'll also wanna say, we would never close a road without first communicating with the residents and the businesses, have a plan in place. Council always knows when we're going to close a road well in advance, so I can't speak to what has been shared with you by contractors who work for a company that really works for us.
Sure.
But we would never do that without first vetting that closure, and making sure that that's the only option or the most feasible option. So I'd love to sit down with you.
Okay, anytime, because I've kinda turned into the guy that, and I don't voluntarily seek this, but the people come in, they're like, well, hey, what's the latest you've heard? And they're like, the project manager knows my phone number. She's just, hello, Mr. Roberson, what's, what's going on today? Okay, and I'm, I'm happy to work with him. You know, and so far, the crews that's there have been very accommodating to allow people to get in and out, but it's just this thing of, of the Haverhill intersection, that's, that's just gonna cause all kinds of mayhem. Anyway, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Bob, and, and if you can just work directly with, with our city manager, Mr. Reed, you know, outside of this meeting-
Oh, sure.
And then he can put you in touch with Julio Gomez, and then, then the two of them can keep you updated.
Well, and I realize that Gomez has his own environment he has to work in, that his, his decisions are framed by the framework he has to work in. And I just think we can, we could do better, we could work better than that.
Thank you, thank you, Bob. All right, next up is Becky Montoya. Come on up, Becky.
Oh, gee, we're wondering if Becky-
Oh, okay, got it, all right. And then Lenny's Palmero? Lenny's? Did you wanna come up to the podium and say anything? No? Okay, that was one of those, all right. And then Susan Seshler, I know you, come on up, Susan. Welcome, how are you today?
Fine. I have a meeting at 7:30, so I have to leave after this. I apologize for taking my time at this moment for an agenda item. I'm Susan Seshler of Warbur Woods Bird Sanctuary, and I'm talking about 11A, the public storage. That three-story public storage is really gonna be an eyesore along Old Wiederstein Road. It's across the street from a neighborhood, and across the street from a preschool, and it's half a block away from the elementary school. And I forgot to thank you for your time and effort for our citizens, thank you. But anyway, the traffic going in and out of there is gonna be difficult, and they're using the access point to the neighborhood as where they're going in and out, which further complicates it for the neighborhood. Neighborhood shirts, and that's why they're not complaining. But anyway, I'm concerned about the wastewater runoff, because all those little segments of Town Creek end up going into me or by me, and end up at Green Valley. So you could have contaminated stuff from a storage unit, so that needs to be addressed. And the lighting is adverse to Warbur Woods Bird Sanctuary. The birds migrate at night, so that's a problem. But anyway, I appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Seshler. I, I really appreciate your time and, and for coming down here tonight and sharing your concerns about the proposed development on 11A. I know that I've heard from a ton of citizens that they feel very similar to you. So thank you very much for, for sharing that with us. Next up is Clement Sullivan. Welcome, Clement.
First, let me say peace to each and every one of you on the council and the supporting staff members. I'm here to address an issue that occurred on Saturday. It ties right into the agenda item nine, Sibolo Fest Recap. An incident occurred that could have bring a stain on the City of Sibolo. They were very disorganized, it involved a verbal confrontation between a gentleman by the name of Jacob Parson, and was triggered by the conversation with a one named David. It got to the point where there was the standby present of over six law enforcement personnel present on that incident that day. Okay? The, I think the position of this individual, the Assistant Public Work Director, his confrontation with my spouse, okay, did not demonstrate professional etiquette under, as a representation of this office and employment that carries. I'm a social worker, and I've had patients who call me all kind of names because of my epidermis, and I still provide service for them. It got to the point where he was confronting my wife, and she had to say, stand back. Now, that could have triggered law enforcement. Five years ago, law enforcement had got involved, but I have to say, they exercised discipline and reverence. So I have to give kudos to Sibolo officers, because dealing with someone of black with law enforcement is not a good history. And I have to say that as well. My wife was distraught, our business did not flourish that day because there were confusion. And we have been doing it for the past four years with no incident whatsoever. This Sibolo Fest never had an incident until Saturday, because of poor coordination, poor planning, and I do not know what the motive was. But you could have had a stain involved in Mr. George Hyde, depends on how the situation go. Because I am also a member of the Pan African Culture Committee, I'm an executive director of the Caribbean Law Enforcement Foundation, I'm also a member of NOBO, I was able to meet the chief as well. Luckily, I had a good talk with him, and introduced myself as well. I'm also a therapist and a social worker as well. I live in Sibolo since 2005, when there were just farmlands and grass. Okay? And this is my wife, but she's on the list to speak, but I'm gonna stand beside her just to give her moral support before she just blow it as well. I hope this never happened again, but it was very psychologically traumatic to my spouse, that I had to step in, tell a step away as well. And it's a good thing, my wife said, do not bring my son. I don't know why, because we did anticipate that something was going to go wrong. So maybe that's why we respond differently, but she said, do not bring my son, because he might have been in handcuffs on that day. And good call. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And, you know, just to let you know, we did receive the email that was sent to all, all of us that you see up here tonight. And so I, I believe, I know I read it, and I believe the rest of the members that are up here with us today have read the email, and we do understand your position, and we understand your story and your side of what happened. And so we hear you loud and clear, and we did receive a response from our city manager, that man right there, Mr. Reed, and he, he is conducting an investigation. And so once that investigation is, is completed, then we'll have the facts presented to us. So thank you, we appreciate you bringing-
Just one more thing, because it, it's personnel, we only have four personnel that work under this body, and that would be our city secretary, city manager, city attorney, and our city judge. So the personnel issue, it's gonna have to go through Mr. Reed, but we do hear y'all loud and clear, and I, I did read it, and it was very disturbing to, to, to hear what took place. Thank you.
Okay, wel, welcome, it's a, did you wanna say anything, Kathleen?
I thought I was.
Yeah, you, you're welcome to, come, come on up. Yeah, we'll give you, yeah, so there's three minutes for your husband and three minutes for you, so please, please, please tell us your, tell us your-
That's what I thought.
Yes, welcome.
I mean, I have, have, have the pleasure to work with great people. I've been living here since 2005. Upmost respect for a lot of staff here. I've been wonderful people, my children were to school, and, and I'm just fired up about what happened. I just couldn't believe it. What had happened should not have happened. David was very unprofessional, Jacob Parson, I don't know where he come from, I don't know if he was on meds, I don't know whatever, but it will have transpired, it was, it's very sad, and it should never happen. I spent a lot of money coming there, and I spent a lot of money, and I, I did not earn it back. I spent close to $2,500, and I barely sold ten plates of food of duck chicken. I never had that problem before in my life. I've honestly, I had the pleasure of working with Peggy for two years straight. Great people, great fun, just talking to every, all different races that had no problem. I have the perfect example, meet the chief there, wonderful person. I saw him one time, I was, hey, 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 how are you? Beautiful person, this is the first time in my, and he responds to me, I mean, wonderful. I do not know where Jacob Parson come from, I don't know why he has this position, but he came at me in a way you wouldn't even come at a, a dog. He did not see me as a person, he did not see me as a human being, he did not see me. He saw me as a black person, and he went charging. If I didn't stand my hand like this, he would have knocked me out. And eight cops were surrounding me, and that's not a good feeling. Eight police officers were surrounding me, and that was not a good feeling, and I would never, never live it down. Some accountability will come, and he will be held accountable. If I have to call my lawyer to get involved, he will not be here on my tax dollars. I would never accept that, I would not have the uncomfortable feel that I gotta walk in Sibolo and watch my back there, because any cop was there, know my name, my address, and who I am, for what reason? Because of Jacob Parson, and David, and Jeanette, Hernandez didn't do their job, and coordinated it, and I gotta be held accountable? And look, and whatever I walk and what I do, and this, no, it's not gonna happen. I am gonna make sure, and I'm gonna stand fast to make sure Jacob Parson be held accountable, because he making each and every one of y'all look bad for the great work that Joe does, and he cannot be here, not on my dime, and I will not rest. He is a racist, and he do not need to be here. There's no way you will look at a person, you look at each and every person as a human being. First is a human being. He has a part of color, he should not be here, it's in him. He was a raging bull. He was a raging- He was a raging bull. If I didn't stand my hand, he would knock me out. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for sharing what happened at Sybalo Fest, and as I said earlier to your husband, the, our city manager is doing a full investigation into this matter, and you will be contacted with further information. So thank you very much for coming out, and thank you for being a part of Sybalo. We did read your email, and we know that you've come out plenty of times and served your Jamaican food, and I know that's a big hit in this community. We do have Dr. Donovan Jackson over there with Mama Mills, and he's been a great partner to the city of Sybalo. I know that that type of food is very well received in this community, so I don't know what else to say, but thank you very much for bringing those concerns to us.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next up is Chris Wood. Chris.
Hello, how are y'all doing today? As you said, my name's Chris Wood. I'm with Mackin Hoover Engineering. I'm in representation of the Sybalo Storage and Mr. Jeff Echols. I've been to the previous city council meetings, so again, I appreciate everybody's time today. I interviewed and was hired by Mr. Echols as a civil engineer to look at the specific site conditions, not only with our extensive representation of other storage facilities, our representation throughout the state and throughout the United States and throughout the world in engineering. And also, I was the lead civil design engineer for the QuickTrip gas station. I represent QuickTrip on a large statewide basis, so I know the ins and outs of what we had to do to develop between the city of Sybalo and the city of Shirts jurisdiction to include GB Sud for utility services. I do want to note that the application is for 7.38 acres. It actually was reduced upon recommendation from councils and conversations, so it's just over four acres. So we have reduced that scope of the proposed conditional use permit. Some of the challenges that we looked at were hooking up to the wing drive of the QuickTrip. There is a huge topography issue, and it's hard to facilitate a development within those topography issues, being that the 20-foot of topography change between the sites. So we had a look at that. There is about a six-foot drop coming off there. So our ability to take a large development, cut the site, it actually facilitates the storage unit really well, because we actually used the first store as somewhat of a semi-basement. We actually cut into the wall and allow it to work with the topography, also minimizing the height as you view it from the road, being that it's also behind the QuickTrip. So we worked in conjunction with architects to develop something that hopefully facilitate what the consumer would need, but also the landscape as best as possible. The other note, we do have, we have a presentation that Mr. Echols gave you. On page 20, you can kind of see how that the correspondence, we actually reached out to the fire marshal and asked about some concerns we had with the adjacent developer and how he might be able to access off 1103 and Old Weiderstein. We've reached out to the fire marshal and asked, you know, "Hey, would this be a good facilitation to allow this second access point between 1103 and Old Weiderstein," in which you can see that in our correspondence with the fire marshal and on page 24 with the adjacent developer's letter. And the fire marshal agreed. We had a really great conversation with Mr. Justin Garcia, who's actually the fire inspector, and he said in everyone's interest, it's best to move forward with the proposal to join the two together. So I don't want to take too much of your time, but I just wanted to give, you know, a professional representation of what we, some of the things we had to go through to hopefully facilitate something that works within that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next up is Jeff Echols. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening. Jeff Echols with InterGold Investments. I'd like to come back and hopefully have, I didn't know, not guaranteed to have time to speak as the applicant. I certainly have many things to say and additional information for you, but I'm going to talk really quickly in case I don't have the opportunity. I provided a sheet for everyone of the self-storage rates in the area. I was shocked myself to find, I thought I was going to report to you that the city of Sybalo is 30 or 40% higher than its immediately surrounding comparable-type facilities. It's actually double, and I'm not exaggerating. I provided today's online rates on where you would go, and I'd like to elaborate, be quizzed on where these locations are, but just up the street in South New Braunfels, for example, on I-35, there's an extra space there. Also, if you went, if you're familiar with the Rolling Oaks area, all these are three-story climate control areas. And so the concern is thrown out in our industry a lot. You see a self-storage facility, and you think, "Oh, there's too much." It's just like seeing apartment complexes in San Antonio. They're going up everywhere, but somehow they're getting filled up, and the rates aren't dropping. And so the rates are literally double, and with a smartphone, I started to print them out for you, but you can, if you Google "self-storage near South New Braunfels" or anything with your smartphone, you can spot-check and verify that these are the correct rates today. Additionally, in addition to just the location for the CUP purposes being appropriate and the fact that it's next to the back end of the QuickTrips, not the front end, that it has this topography issue that the entire Marbach 14 acres needs to connect to that driveway, and as Chris Woods was trying to say, there's six feet of fill that otherwise would be needed to connect to that. So, you know, our position is clearly that it's an appropriate use. In fact, as 25 years of real estate, I don't know what else you would do except for, that would be feasible economically unless you did the entire property multifamily, which I know the city doesn't want, or if you did it as the detention pond itself, which every commercial developer wants the valuable frontage and doesn't want the entrance to be a detention pond. So with that being said, that it is appropriate for the CUP use, and not speaking, speaking to tax revenues just as the weight of an importance of the decision is a factor. And after the planning commission, the neighboring 1103 ventures met me outside the unanimous approval at Planning Commission, asked me about our plans, and offered the potential to collaborate, which we were very excited about. We've offered as a condition not only providing essential secondary point of the emergency access. That property by itself cannot be developed without finding another access point, since it's only will get one curb cut off 1103. And so as a condition of the approval, we're volunteering to provide them and/or the city of Sybalo an easement and providing that emergency access. But additionally, my capital partner, who plans to develop this 14 acres and now potentially joint venture the entire 33 acres and connect them together. It was actually Mr. Vishnu's, is his first name, his idea to pursue target, which he can't do by himself, we couldn't do by ourselves. But if you look at page 23 of my presentation, you'll see the combined potential of that property, and you'll see that it could be so much more collaboratively speaking.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hope to come back and speak to you further.
Okay. Next up is Jeff McLaughlin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Jeff McLaughlin. I'm here to speak about Agenda Item 11A, and I'm not here just to speak about, from myself, but also the many residents that I've been in contact with over the last couple of weeks. There's not one resident I've spoke to that's excited about a storage facility. There's another storage facility that is a three-minute drive further up, 1103, right when you come off I-35. I have no doubt that it would be filled up, like most storage facilities, once they're put. I have no doubt they'd be able to utilize it. But once y'all consider what kind of message we're sending, it's going to be right next to the "Welcome to Sybalo" sign, so perception is, "Welcome to Sybalo, drop your stuff off here." Kind of gives a perception that people don't really truly bed down Sybalo, this isn't really where people, you know, plant the roots, and doesn't really give that sense of community that we all look for when we're kind of trying to decide where we're going to hang our hat for the last time. I know it's a tough spot, and there's a lot of things to consider, but those are kind of the big things that I've been hearing from other residents in Sybalo is, do we really need it, because we have one just up the road, and what kind of message are we sending people when that's the first thing they see right next to the "Welcome to Sybalo" sign right off 1103? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Next up is Mr. Todd West. Welcome, Mr. West.
Good evening. That was great action over here, you know, with that Royal Trune thing. Boom, done. These city employees work hard, and y'all must log like 60 hours a week, I swear. Okay, Mr. Todd West, I'm here to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 11A again. So that is to build a multi-level storage facility. To recap from the first meeting, since a couple of you weren't here, what I learned was District 5, City Council Manager, Member Sanchez Stevens initially was opposed to building a multi-level self-storage facility, stating in an email that the developer, to the developer, that the proposal would face continued resistance as the community is experiencing fatigue with storage units. We also learned that she emailed Councilmember Joe Hicks and asked him to call her regarding her opposition, and then shortly after changed her opinion to being in favor of approving the CUP. Councilmember Sanchez Stevens later claimed she changed her opinion after driving out to see the property, which is hard to believe, that she's not already intimately familiar with the district in which she's supposed to represent. The fact is, the community is experiencing fatigue with storage units, and every member of the city council is supposed to represent their constituents and not themselves. We also learned that the city spent $20,000 of our tax dollars hiring a consultant and asked them to complete a strategic economic development plan. This plan calls for retail service and job creation through small-scale professional offices, medical spaces, and active retail, not storage facilities. A Facebook poll was created on the Shirts Sybalo community page, and not one person that took the poll supported the idea of another storage facility. We can muddy the waters and talk about top lines and grid lines and elevation levels, but you can't put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. Several of you are currently running for reelection, and this vote tonight will reflect on who you actually represent. Remember, Joe can tell you how to vote tonight, but he can't tell your constituents how to vote in the coming weeks ahead. Let's see who you represent, the residents of Sybalo or ourselves. We've got some more time here, so. I do need to go and start preparing for the Meet the Candidates night, tomorrow night, because I'm sure regarding, a lot of questions regarding tonight's vote, the SROs, threats to city employees, and collusion amongst members of the board will come up. I'll have to watch the results tonight on video. As far as some people saying that the San Antonio has a lot of apartments, maybe they need more storage facilities. I don't believe Sybalo does. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. West. Next up is Wesley Jeffords. Wesley, welcome, Wesley. How you doing?
Very good, sir. I'm going to keep this very brief, because I've spoken on this topic a lot. I'm glad to see that the youth council is finally up for a vote. I encourage y'all to vote for its approval, or at least for the approval of the applicants, and, yeah, I'm done. I don't want to give a long, drawn-out speech. I'm done. Sorry.
That's it? Okay, well, thank you so much, Wesley. We really enjoy seeing you come up here. It really means a lot to me to see the youth of Sybalo get involved in city government and be involved in joining the youth council and understanding what's going on up here. Believe it or not, we're probably not a hot topic at the high schools, you know, of anything that we're doing up here. So it's interesting to me to see somebody your age interested in city government, so we really, really appreciate that. Katie, did you have something to say?
No, I was just going to say thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Very good. All right, so we got four emails to be read by the city secretary office. You going to read them? Okay.
The first one is from Greg and Sarah Rivera at 133 Royal Trune Drive. "We request the following to be read aloud during the October 15th council meeting under Item 7, Citizens to be Heard. Dear members of the city council, I am writing to bring to your attention the deteriorating condition of Royal Trune Drive, which has become a significant concern for residents in our area. The road's current state of disrepair, including multiple sinkholes, uneven surfaces, and poor drainage poses both safety hazards and quality of life issues for the community. It is in urgent need of a complete reconstruction similar to the successful remodeling done on Sybalo Valley Road. The ongoing wear and tear on Royal Trune Drive not only affects the drivability of the road, but also increases the potential for accidents and vehicle damage. Given that Sybalo has demonstrated its commitment to infrastructure improvements, as seen with the recent upgrades to Sybalo Valley Road, we believe that Royal Trune Drive should be given similar priority. A comprehensive renovation will enhance both public safety and the aesthetic value of the neighborhood. Additionally, the poor road conditions may have an adverse impact on property values, potentially limiting future economic growth if existing neighborhoods are not maintained. It is important to note that under Texas Local Government Code Chapter 212, the city of Sybalo has a responsibility to ensure that public infrastructure, including roadways, is properly maintained to meet safety and accessibility standards. Failure to address such concerns in a timely manner can expose the city to legal liability in the event of accidents caused by hazardous conditions. By taking swift action to prioritize the reconstruction of Royal Trune Drive, the city council will be demonstrating its commitment to the well-being of its residents and ensuring that legal obligations are fulfilled. I respectfully request that the city council consider making the complete remodeling of Royal Trune Drive a top priority in the upcoming city planning sessions. I, along with many concerned residents who recently signed a petition, look forward to your response and hope that a solution can be reached to improve this essential roadway. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I appreciate your service to our community and look forward to seeing continued improvements across Sybalo. Sincerely, Greg and Sarah Rivera." The next one is from Eugene Chance.
What's the name?
Eugene Chance.
Chance.
It just says, "Good afternoon. I am against a storage facility on Old Weiderstein Road."
What did he say now?
He is against the storage facility.
Eugene Chance is against the storage facility 11A? Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next one is from Taren Dunbar. "To whom it may concern, I am a homeowner in Riada neighborhood, and I do not want a storage unit to be built in my literal backyard. It will be a huge eyesore, and I don't feel safe with the clientele that this will bring into our neighborhood. My kids play in our backyard all the time, and this storage unit will be right across the street from us. Please do not allow this to happen in our neighborhood. Please keep our kids safe and don't allow this eyesore by our houses. Respectfully, Taren Dunbar."
What was that name again? Could you tell me?
Taren Dunbar.
Karen Dunbar?
Taren with a T.
Oh, Taren, okay. Thank you.
This one is from Jeremy Dunbar.
Jerry Dunbar, okay.
Jeremy.
Thank you.
This is, "Good afternoon. As a Riada neighborhood resident, I am reaching out to you to voice concerns over the proposed storage complex on Old Weiderstein Road across from our neighborhood." Reference picked below, it's a picture of the 11A. "This sort of development will bring unwanted traffic into our neighborhood, much of which could be dangerous personnel. It also will decrease our property value and become an eyesore. Please disapprove this ordinance on behalf of concerned citizens and keep Sybalo family-friendly. Respectfully, Jeremy Dunbar."
That's it? You had four, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. We want to get to these next two rather quickly. Well, you know what, actually, well, we're going to do the consent agenda real quick, because I don't think that'll take long, and then we're going to skip up to the two. But we're going to skip the staff update till later in the evening. So let's go to the consent agenda 8A. "All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on September 24th, 2024. B, approval of the July 2024 check register pending final acceptance of the city's financial audit for the 2324 fiscal. C, approval of the July 24 revenue and expense report pending final acceptance of the city's financial audit for the 2324 fiscal. And D, approval and authorizing the city manager to execute a work order with Colliers Engineering to provide services for financial year 25 in the amount of $100,000."
I'd like to remove 8D.
You want to remove 8D? Okay. Would you like to make a motion to approve A through C then?
Make a motion to approve 8A, B, C.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, a second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote on your screens. All right, motion. All right, motion carries, seven zero. And so, on eight D, do you want to open discussion on that item, Councilman Hicks?
Um, I read through the large packet that came. I want to make sure that Collier understands, I mean, that there's not going to be any extras here and there. That's all of the work that needs to be done over the next year is in that $100,000.
The $100,000 includes general tasks that I'm asked to do by the city.
Yes.
So, like the, recently we did some survey staking. That was part of the $100,000. When we have specific projects, like a wastewater design or something of that nature, then that would be a separate contract. This is more for just the general engineering that we're asked, the day-to-day kind of stuff.
And for reference also, we do currently, in the budget that the council approved, it is already at $115,000. This was just an initial $100,000 for it. There is already budgeted an additional $15,000 should some additional costs come up. But also, the majority of these plat and plan review fees are, do have an associated revenue source coming in because it's paid out of application fees. And so, if we had additional costs just because, you know, business is great and we have a lot of things coming in and there's a lot of reviews happening, then there would also be associated revenues coming in to help offset the costs.
So, you're saying, Kelsey, that this could be a wash as far as the fees that we're charging developers to come in the door, review the plans?
Yes.
We could earn $115,000 and this could be a wash, right?
In theory, yes. I mean, there's usually some that will come in that are city engineering, where city engineer is doing something for the city itself that's not tied to an application that's paying, but the majority of the work that's done is offset by a revenue line coming in.
Mayor, if I could just add, so this is just a course of doing business. The city council earlier this year approved six master service agreements, MSAs. Colliers was one of those. The MSAs do not authorize work or expenditures. It authorizes the six engineering firms based upon their expertise through our request for qualifications to perform that scope of work. Work orders, like the one that's in front of you, subsequently come to authorize specific work by one of those six engineering firms. You've authorized work orders for Colliers to work on the Town Creek Trail Program, to do drainage work. This is, tonight, the $100,000 work order is a course of doing business once you approve the annual budget. So, Ms. Kelsey Jordan Lee brought this forward to you to approve it within budget. And because we can't say what development applications that they'll work on or what specific city requests we may ask of them. For example, Mr. Otto was referring to a staking of Veterans Park entry to verify the property line. We pay for that, not the applicants. The $100,000 will be spent on development services, services if you will. So, I hope you understand that?
I do.
You have done that in FY '23 and FY '24, and this is for FY '25.
Okay, with that understanding, would you like to make a motion? Joel Hicks?
Make a motion to approve eight B.
Second.
Okay, so we'll say, Norma Sanchez Stevens got the second. I think she beat you, Katie. All right, please vote. Seven zero. All right, we're going to jump down to 11A. Approval/disapproval of an ordinance for a conditional use permit request to allow a convenience storage use for 7.38 acres out of 12.7630 acre tract of certain real property located at 221105 Old Weiderstein Road, legally described as ABS 277. Sir J.N. Richardson, 12.7630 AC. Ms. Huerta, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, this item was on the agenda last council meeting. It was tabled to give staff an opportunity to prepare some information that council had requested. Previously, the Planning and Zoning Commission had made a recommendation of approval, seven to zero, of approval with conditions. The owner is David Marbach, being represented by Jonathan McNamara from Mackin Hoover. Attached is to the staff report, our seven conditions should council decide to recommend in favor. Staff would recommend that these seven conditions be included as part of the ordinance, and council does have the opportunity to either approve the requested conditional use permit for convenience storage, approve it with conditions, or deny it with findings. The information that council requested is attached to your staff report. It includes the data that council had requested from last time. I know we received some assistance from the finance director to put it together. So, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer that, and the applicant is also here. If you have any questions.
And I remember we looked at this agenda item in early September. I believe we had two council meetings in the month of September.
Yes.
The first council meeting in the month of September, we did look at this item, and we were about to vote on it, but then Mayor Portem and Councilman Joel Hicks made a motion to table this item because he was not satisfied with the amount of information he had in front of him. So, from that point to today, have you received the information you requested, Councilman Hicks? You have? Okay. Does anyone on council have any questions? We'll start with Councilman Benson. Or comments, discussion?
Not really. I mean, I think my big struggle with this property is like, is like a lot of them on 1103, where we have found over the last 10 years that I've been here, it seems like there's these, what Mark Luft used to call "deep properties", and never have been able to get a handle on what these things can be done with. I believe a couple of years ago, before the master plan started, I had requested that we go back through here and look at some of these properties and see if they were zoned appropriately for the uses that they could be done. It does not, I don't know, did that get done in this master plan? Did any of these, did we talk to any owners? Did we change anything off the master plan? Or did that not, does anybody know? It doesn't seem to me what I could see it changed. So, these are troubling pieces of ground because ultimately, these are, these people have owned property and want to do something with it, and nothing that we seem to be able to. The only request I've seen for this in 10 years is apartments. And so, you know, we have this interesting UDC that says, anywhere in any zoning, a storage unit requires a cup. And it seems a little bit onerous as well. So, we end up in these discussions over a commercial property that seems like it's in a perfect place to be doing this kind of stuff. So, I think, if nothing else, when we look at the UDC, I would like to take a look at why we've done that in the past and maybe if that's a practice that needs to continue because certainly, commercial property, we could see these all over Siblo, and everywhere they've gone, somebody's managed to get a cup for them and get them done. You know, it's a tough decision because the reality of it is, is that I am not a huge fan of these things. But at the same time, as a property owner, I can imagine that at some point I would like to exercise the use of selling my property and finding what seven people up here want to do with it is a little bit difficult to do. So, tough position, but I think there's some things that we need to work on going forward, specifically UDC issues. And again, if we could, I'll ask again, we need to look at these properties and find out. I mean, we're on our second, in my 10 years working with the city, we're on our second UDC, EDC person, and no one can really tell me what to do with these properties. Now, it sounds like there might be a fix to this if all of the things were there, but I just, it concerns me that we have these large, deep, commercial properties that nobody seems to know how to build or bring in. So, that was my comments. I haven't been here for the last two discussions. I apologize, I've been out of town, but those are some things I've been thinking about.
Yeah, understood. I know that you were out of town when this came up in early September. And so, I'm glad that you were able to join us tonight and give us your insight.
If I may, just to, because Councilman Benson asked a question about what the status of that property is. So, when this application was originally submitted, we were under the previous future land use map, and so it did have that identified as commercial. It is still currently zoned commercial. However, through the process of going through the new master plan update, the master plan advisory committee did recommend that be changed and indicated as what's called community residential. And so, on the current future land use map that council approved last month, it does have that out as residential, not commercial.
What about the, I mean, there was a group of, my request, and I think this is still germane, and we'll find out if George agrees in a minute, but there's a whole list of properties running sort of behind the C2 fronts on 1103 that all face this kind of same issue that, again, goes back to my time in planning and zoning, where they were, I don't know what this term means exactly, no one could ever really tell me, but they were too deep for commercial. So, a big box store doesn't want to come in and have this really deep property, which I would think they'd need a really deep property, but whatever. And, but they were too deep, or that they were maybe too far off 1103 and deep. I don't really know, but they've never really taken. Now, I get the situation on 1103 has not been ideal. I mean, if I had a lot of money and I was going to put a business in, 1103 would not be my place to go right now because we can't seem to get the state to build the road. But at some point, those are going to develop, and my concern is, is that if we're not set up to develop them correctly because they're not, you know, now apparently we've turned them into residential. So, you know, that big strip of a five-lane road going down 1103 may not even be able to be developed now because it's been future land use to residential. So, and that may be just this property, I don't know. I don't know about the ones that almost continue all the way down 1103, but I think...
It's consistent going down.
Okay. So, I guess this problem may be solved, that we just won't have any commercial along those places and all be residential packed in, so. According to the future land use map, so. All right. That'll solve that problem, except for tonight.
Thanks, DG. Randy Roberts?
I guess just my comment would be, from what I've heard and folks that have called and sent emails, that there's just, there's not a, I guess, an overwhelming desire for another three-story self-storage building in the city of Siblo. I think there's better uses for that land.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mahoney?
So, before...
Did you have a question, George?
Mr. Mayor, could we have Ms. Huerta identify the seven conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission had in connection with their approval so that those are also known to the public as well as the council before they make further decisions?
Sure, I can read those out. That included, the first one was a site plan, that a site plan being compliance with UDC Section 12.3.2. It must be reviewed, and it shall substantially not deviate from the concept plan that was submitted for consideration and approval. Building and fire codes, they must comply with all building fire code requirements. Permits and inspections, that all required building permits and CFO must be obtained, and that all applications submitted for this property are subject to the requirements of the code. Additional uses, that no other conditional uses are allowed under this conditional use permit. Recordation of a plat, that a subdivision plat must be submitted for review and approval with the city of Siblo and recorded upon completion. Retail Office C3 regulations, that all regulations of the Retail Office C3 zoning district, other than those amended by the conditional use permit, apply to the property. And review fees, all fees associated with the review and processing of the application must be paid in full.
So, the, there were two points that were made earlier, I wanted to clarify those. So, I understood that the cup was reduced in size from the seven acres of the entire property down to four? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be another condition?
To 3.93.
Okay, and then there was another condition with regards to the adoption or having at least an emergency ingress and egress easement over the property for purposes of police, fire, first responders? Is that, that was a comment that was made earlier by, I believe, the applicant?
That, that's a requirement for the city regardless of what use you have on the building.
Yeah, you need to come up to the...
That'll be part of the site plan. They'll have to comply with fire codes, and that'll have to be demonstrated on the site plan that they meet all access requirements.
Okay, well, right now, we're limiting the discussion to council, so let's get back on track. And Councilman Mahoney, you are now recognized.
So, the, I'm sorry. Yeah, I would just, the comments that have been made so far by Councilmember Roberts because of the issues of, if there's a denial, there must be findings. These are findings of incompatible adjacent land uses.
Okay, so that will be our reason?
That would be the basis so far, based on the comments.
So, if we deny it, it'll be based upon compatibility with adjacent land uses?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, nothing. Councilwoman Cunningham?
So, I've looked into this quite a bit, did a lot of reading, and went out to the site, looked at it, and I'm still undecided. So, I'm going to just mix in questions with things that, if I'm wrong, please correct me. So, this property is a hill. It is right next to a gas station. That is not going to be something that people are going to be jumping up and down about, just in general. I've heard comments about this being the gateway into Siblo. Well, the gateway into Siblo is actually the QT. I wasn't a huge fan of that going there. I wasn't on council at the time when that was approved. So, this is actually set back from that on a road that Shirts owns. So, it being the gateway to Siblo is not really accurate. Three-story building, the way that it was described in the documentation provided and at previous council meetings, since it's on a hill, only two stories will actually be visible. The third is kind of a walkout basement, and so it's not going to be this looming Tower of Doom. It's just going to be a two-story building with a walkout basement on the back. Seeing the property, that does make sense. And I think there was an email that we received that said that, and they can use it that way because the storage unit doesn't have windows. I don't know why that stuck with me, but I was like, that makes sense. Obviously, if you need a three-story building or need a walkout basement for any other type of business, you would need windows. So, with those things said, oh, and also, the other businesses that were shown to potentially go in next door to this, so it'd be the QT, the storage unit as a buffer, and then buildings, and we were shown some off of Sontera. I actually know those buildings, my son's eye doctor is there. So, I'm there at least once a year. Those are very nice buildings, they're very quiet buildings, which is a concern many have, the types of businesses that go into, at least in the Sontera area, are medical offices, attorney offices, quiet-type businesses that have daytime hours. So, I understand the plan. I think it's a very well-thought-out plan. I think that using the site, the way that the site is, I think it's very creative. I love, the walkout basement idea is very great. I think that you're addressing a lot of the drainage concerns that we have for that area just because everything else is downstream. Any disruption upstream is going to affect everyone else. So, I think we're very, it's a very forward-looking plan at what are the potential outcomes. So, some of my concerns. We, Siblo in general, has gotten a lot of promises of, well, if we put this in, then everyone will want to come, this will come, and this will come. We'll have a Target, we'll have a Chicken and Pickle, we'll have a Disney. That was a rumor a while ago, we were going to get Disney in Siblo. So, I mean, like, I can't make decisions off of potential promises because we've been burned before. The other hesitation I have is that the comprehensive plan, currently this is zoned commercial, and I never want to change "commercial" to "residential". I think that that's kind of moving backwards. But in our comprehensive plan, which did take in the community's input in several town halls on the comprehensive plan committee, it has this as residential. And I believe from those conversations, the reasoning is that it's a quieter, not as active use, and being right next to Warbler Woods in a park that we just purchased and residential area, it makes, we would want something quiet there. The type of businesses proposed next to the storage unit seem to be quieter businesses. But again, back to the promises thing, we don't have a guarantee that those are the types of things that would come. Target is not a quiet business, as much as I would love to not have to drive on 35 to get to one, that's not necessarily a quiet business. And so, that's a little, I mean, we can't talk about things that might come because that isn't a guarantee. So, community... So, community residential, according to our comprehensive plan, show, it's a place type that shows that it can have courtyard housing, accessory dwelling units, single-family detached civic institutional and park space. So, again, just confirming the quiet type of businesses. For this, from the citizens that have spoken, the concerns that I'm hearing the most are noise and it being ugly. So, are, is there anything that we can do to say, if this goes in, we need to mitigate these two things? And I know that we have limitations on what we can ask or require developers to do, and I don't want to be like, super crazy, but we don't want, if the concerns are that it's ugly, we don't want it to be lime green and hot pink and have neon lights flashing or something like that. So, is there something that we can do to have it have some kind of color requirement, landscaping, screening-type requirement, that if this is approved and moves forward, that it would be more disguised and would fit in more with the residential? I know it's right next to a QT, and that's going to be a sore thumb, but if the concerns that I'm hearing are noise, or it being ugly, and, and the noise, yeah, birds, noise and animal protection, are there some things that we can build into this that would, that would help mitigate those concerns? Yeah, so those are my questions, and I'm not sure what the answer is to those.
Yes, you are able to add conditions. Since it is a conditional use permit, you are able to add conditions, like, we would like to see elevations that, that show that a certain color scheme will be followed, or placement of building, or, it's a conditional use permit, you can add conditions.
I know that the storage unit that's over off of 1103 that was just built by the church, I walked those neighborhoods that are right next to it, and they're complaining quite a bit about the light. And I know we already have an ordinance with the down, the downlights, the muted lights, and being a storage facility, you need security, that's obvious, but I would also, if we move forward with this, I would also recommend something about that, just to guarantee that we are not disturbing any of the residents that are nearby with light pollution, noise pollution, or anything like that.
That could be a condition. Of course, they are already required to follow our lighting ordinance.
Yeah, there, the throw limitation can be revised so that the light that is thrown from a light does not leave the property. With regards to the facade being modified, you, there's other areas where you may have seen storage facilities that are kind of camouflaged with windows and other things that are on the front, so long as that is going to try to mitigate the incompatible land use adjacency, then those would be reasonable for you to add.
And that's what I'm thinking, is that the, if the land use nearby is residential and is more rural, and on our comprehensive plan, it's saying community residential, I think that the facade is a big thing, because a two-story storage unit is, if it has no windows, it just looks like Alcatraz or something. So, I think that if we can mitigate that, then that may alleviate some of the concerns. You're never going to make everyone happy, but I'm, I did a lot of reading on this, I did a lot of talking to people, and those were the biggest concerns that I heard. I understand, the developer did a great job in presenting this, I understand the concerns with that. I'm still torn, but if, if it does move forward, those would be some things that I would like to see in it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cunningham. And so, you know, as the mayor of Sibolo, I don't get a vote, and so, there's seven people here tonight, and so there's not going to be a tie. And so, I just want to go on record that I do oppose this three-story storage unit to be built right there as people cross from Shirts into Sibolo, based upon incompatible with adjacent land uses. And so, I do think that that's a valid reason to deny it. We did spend a lot of money to hire the gentleman, I think his name was Kyle, from Washington, DC, to do a economic opportunity analysis. So, we spent taxpayer dollars to conduct a economic opportunity analysis. And so, as soon as Kyle got on his plane and went back to DC, we're over here doing the opposite of what he recommended. The very first chance we get, we're looking at doing something that's contrary to what was recommended by an economic development, or an economic opportunity analysis that we just paid for. And so, I don't, I did not see a three-story self-storage as a recommendation from the economic opportunity analysis that we just spent taxpayer dollars on. And so, I don't think that this is the right location within the city of Sibolo. You know, if this were to be somewhere on 78, on the way to Marion, maybe on the, on the border of Sibolo over there, that might be a better location, but I just don't think it's the right location. Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens, you are recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I think it's worthy to note that residents in South Sibolo are wondering why North Sibolo isn't fluid, meaning that why is South, you just mentioned, you know, a storage facility going into 78 towards Marion, that's still further south. I think residents are seeing this disparity in equity, and I think we should really consider looking at this as strictly land use instead of sides of town preference. We certainly don't want to draw any boundary lines, and I think it would be very dismissive if we don't look at this with appropriate land use. To the point of what Ms. Cunningham had mentioned, absolutely, I had thought about all those things just as well. I know that we have, in just discussions in the past, there are architectural design options that you can go ahead and put with development, and it's my understanding that when it came to our Walmart, our Walmart, Walmart is quite unique in that it's not just a regular rectangular, you know, cornered edges that, you know, we can have that as a standard from the developer just as well. I also looked at the proposal about the medical professional, medical offices that could potentially come in. What I see that is also an opportunities for professional incomes to come into the city of Sibolo, maybe draw, draw in some professionals from San Antonio into our city, which then they can also utilize the services in our city, as well as, you know, use the restaurants. So, I also enjoyed that these medical offices could also be eight to five. They'll be eight to five and maybe possibly closed on the weekends. So, this is a very low impact for future development just as well. And to what Mr. Echols presented earlier, the, the fire lanes, the emergency lanes that are coming in, is quite attractive to the commercial adjacent to this property that he's intending on building, in that it's going to be more attractive and more desirable, it may, more desirable in that we could have potential services come in. I know he mentioned Target, but I know in our packet, he also mentioned Trader Joe's. And I know that is something that our community has also been looking forward to, and I know Trader Joe's is a lot smaller in comparison than, than the Target. My concern was also the lighting, just as well in the evening. I would hope that we could put a condition on maybe some dim lighting so that we don't interfere with that, you know, migration, bird migration here at this time of year in the evening. I feel that that particular corner has already drawn with lighting from CVS, and then potentially the QT comes in, so I think we could be more mindful as the commercial comes in. I felt like this proposal was very reasonable. I know at first, at first plans, you just see storage facility, but then, when you come across the topography, the hill, and so forth, this development can absorb the cost of that to balance this specific area. And so, with, in balancing that, it sets behind the QT, it's not going to be at the frontage of either 1103 or Old Widerstein Road. Instead, it's going to attract businesses to come in and kind of cover that. It's very low impact, there's not high impact of traffic that's going to go into this storage facility. I've passed storage facilities, and I don't see long lines going in and, you know, 100 cars waiting inside. If anything, you see one or two cars go in and easily come out. Again, you know, I, I'm not a big proponent for storage facilities, this was specifically for land use itself, and also for future economic development, because as we know, we are right now going to the voters to increase taxes because our sales revenue is low, and although a storage facility does not generate a lot of income coming in, however, it will attract businesses to come alongside of it, especially with those ingress egress, and the fire inspector himself said this would be a great move for our city, for our future. So, those are just a couple of things to, to mention, that low impact, eight to five, you know, potentially, we can request for architectural design, as well as request for dim lighting, so that it is compatible. And I noticed that within our packet, it does say that the staff finding says the UDC provides lot design guidelines within the retail office C3 zoning district that are, are designed in scale for compatibility with surrounding commercial developments. It further states that the proposed use would be compatible with abutting sites, since the applicant property is located within a developing commercial area. So, as far as compatibility, I know it's within our staff findings, and I think that's all I have to mention at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens. And so, before I pass it over to Councilman Hetzel, Councilwoman Cunningham notified that she had one more comment.
So, I had read the strategic economic development plan, too, and I remembered something from there that I forgot to mention. So, on page 6-4, this is talking about the 35 corridor, which includes that piece of 1103. It says, "The depth of these parcels from 1103 enabled the scaled approach to development. A design concept would entail five-to-six-story mixed-use buildings, fronting 1103 with ground floor commercial." And so, this is, this is that entire area. So, three stories is a little like, whoa, but five to six stories is what's in our plan as recommended for economic development. Now, this is not me supporting it or not, but this is, this is what we have in our plan right now, and it even talks about Warbler Woods and slowly phasing from the tall stuff down to residential when we get to Warbler Woods. But I did remember reading that, sorry, I wanted to point that that's in our plan.
Okay. TG Benson, go ahead.
And I think it's also important to understand, we, just real quick, on that note, is that, you know, maybe the, even though the, the master plan committees maybe changed the flume, those properties still have not been rezoned. So, you know, we get, we're stuck back into this situation where, even though the master plan is changed, we have not gone to these landowners and said, hey, all along 1103, to your point about RKG or RPG, or whatever it was, associates come in and saying, this is how you need to develop. I mean, I think you're right, it may not have been a storage unit they had in mind, I'm sure it was not, right? But at the same time, you know, we've got, I'm kind of, I'm kind of, you know, we got this plan that you talked about, Ms. Cunningham just brought up, that we need these sorts of buildings, and then we've now turned them in the master plan back to homeowners. And so, you know, this tax base, this is, we're going to have a real crunch here pretty soon with the tax base if we don't really take a look at this and figure out what we're going to do, because this is not a huge tax revenue, although four acres of concrete and rock and steel and whatever is going to be more valuable than ag property, it's, or at least taxable higher than ag property. You know, we're, we're not, we're so far outside of all of these things right now, and, and so, we've got to get a handle on it. I don't know, I really don't know what the answer is, but I appreciate you reminding us about the tall buildings because it was just in that report as well. And so, I'm kind of surprised that, I guess I missed that when we looked at the master plan, that we've turned these into small community again, because we're, we're just, we're just building houses on top of houses, and we're not getting very far with commercial if we keep doing this.
Yeah, and because the topic came up, I'll have a quick comment, but I believe what the, what Kyle was, was talking about was more of like, having retail on the bottom floor, and then more like living quarters on the second, you know, maybe third, probably just second floor, you know, where they have like businesses on the bottom, apartments on the top, you know, that, that sort of high-density type of development is, I believe, what he had in mind. And then, phasing from that into like a transitional type of housing that would go to less density as it gets closer to Warbler Woods, the existing neighborhoods like Foxbrook, Turning Stone, you know, the other properties over there that are near Warbler Woods, we already have neighborhoods built, you know, Riada, Belmont, over there in Shirts, on the other side of Old Widerstein. So, it would kind of phase more into the, the traditional family housing that we are accustomed to in this part of town. So, yes, go ahead, Norma.
One more thing, and then I'll pass it over to Councilmembers Hetzel and, and Mr. Hicks. I also wanted to mention, in just forward-thinking about future economic development, is that the detention ponds that they're willing to put in. I feel like what they're, what they're offering to put in to balance this entire area really will make future development there, it'll just put it on the map, because that's just additional investment in infrastructure that future development doesn't have to put in. It's already going to be there. So, those are the reasons behind, you know, when taking a look at the agenda packet, it's for future economic development. What can we do today? What's being offered to do today? He doesn't have to necessarily, but it will be more attractive for, for future economics. I think it's, you know, as council, who, you know, we owe it to our residents to try to attract economic development to our city, and I feel like this is a really good trade-off in what they're willing to offer, and, you know, I think, you know, putting those conditions in there would be worthwhile with a discussion.
Thank you, Norma. Councilman Dick Hetzel?
Well, let's see here. One, I've gotten a number of complaints from citizens, and I find that to be distressing at the least. Six stories? Can we reach a six-story? I don't think so, not for fire protection, anyway. And, so, there's a number of factors involved in the whole thing. In addition, there has been a brand-new storage facility just opened up, up by Steel, and when I walked through that area, it, it looked like it had plenty of room to grow. So, I'm not so sure whether or not we need something between the citizens on one side, the proximity to the Warbler Woods, and a couple of the things. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Okay, and then, one last thing before I pass it to Councilman Hicks. I remember this exact same council, this exact same body did deny a cup for a storage facility over there on Borgfield Road, right over there by the apartments where across the street. And so, I do remember that that person came along and asked for a cup, and this exact same group of council people did deny that one. Go ahead, Councilman Hicks.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because I had that listed on here. And the reason that got denied was because they were wanting a zoning change. They were wanting to go from SF2 to commercial, and so, it was denied for those reasons, Mayor, not for, because it was, you know, a storage unit, it's because they wanted to rezone it. Big difference here, this is zoned commercial, which is what can go in.
They needed a cup for what they were doing.
They had, did I get to speak, Mayor?
Please.
Okay. They had a cup, yes, but they had to get it rezoned. This doesn't have to be rezoned. Anywhere you put a storage unit in this, and that's what Mr. Benson was speaking on, no matter where it goes, whether it's industrial, whether it's commercial, it has to have, come before this council for conditional use or special use permit. This property, and he mentioned you, that because you were his councilman at the time, and you told him, hey, bring some old, senior living. That came, it got denied. Four times, he's tried to sell his property, Mayor, and every time, it gets denied. This was your property. If this was your property and you were trying to sell it, and you had a council that kept denying every single thing that came before you, wouldn't that get a little irritating?
I'll be thinking of a better idea.
Every time he's brought, and he brought forth the idea you brought, and it got denied. I just have a hard time No, it got denied here. This is about property rights. I mean, you know, it's not about a zoning change, this is about somebody that it's zoned correctly, it just needs to have a cup to move forward. He has a right to sell his property. Okay? I mean, I'm looking at the ad valorem tax, what we're going to get off, I mean, right now, we've got a homestead and ag. We don't get very much money, I mean, it's in there, we don't get very much money for that, Mayor.
So, just out of curiosity, you're, the research you did, because I know that you, you tabled this for a specific reason, because you wanted to see how much a 90,000-square-foot retail operation would bring in for, for tax revenue, right? Versus what this would bring in? I, I know that's what you asked for, right?
Someone get to speak now? Okay. Yes. I'm talking about ad valorem. I'm talking about, you put a building on something, you build it out, our tax assessor comes in, values that property, and we're getting something Not sales tax, I'm talking about ad valorem, Mayor. Totally different. I'm talking about, you got the tax assessor comes in, the appraisal district gets involved, they're like, okay, that property has risen in this much, your city is going to get they're like, okay, that property has risen in this much, your city is going to get this much money.
I get it, yeah.
There's a big difference on what we're getting right now, and then putting a storage...
And something, I get it, yeah.
Okay. But it's not just a, a storage. They're willing to build out and possibly take the next property over and build it out. It, it's a, it's a domino effect, you know, they start building here, and we're going to, we're asking our citizens to raise their taxes. We're sitting here going, hey, if y'all want this, y'all want that, you're going to have to raise your taxes. Here's another item where we're going to be collecting more taxes to where we're not having to ask our citizens to raise their taxes.
Do you think this one development would be three cents on every house in...
Not saying that, Mayor, you, you're throwing it way out of proportion, you're throwing it way out. You, you know, you're, you're stretching it, you are stretching it, I'm not.
You want to break the concept?
No, what I'm saying is, we're going to be getting some value.
Something, yeah.
I'm, I'm done.
Okay.
You won't, you won't allow me to finish my conversation?
By all means, you know, the floor is yours, Councilman.
I'm done.
Okay, he's done. All right, so I'm going to call for a motion, please.
Are we on a time limit for this? Are we on a time limit for this?
Um, no.
I'll make a motion to approve 11A, with the conditions, with the lighting conditions, with all the conditions everybody up here on council made.
Well, we didn't really, that's the problem, that's what I was asking, was...
There was a seven, there was seven conditions, plus you brought up the lights.
But for specific, we can't just say...
For the 3.93 acres, additional access.
For, for purposes of clarity, what I've heard so far is that the property would be improved such that there would be regional detention for the other area properties, is that correct, Councilmember? Just of the subject property for the other seven, three acres? That there would be the, at a minimum, the emergency ingress egress easement, there would be an agricultural, I mean, architectural approval, compatible architectural provisions that would need to be approved, and that there would be lighting conditions that would need to be approved, in addition to the seven items that were already listed by P&amp;Z. Is there anything else that I missed?
Yeah, so we'll go around the dials, if anyone wants to add any conditions, we can make sure that, that you notate it, since you're our city attorney, because when this motion is made, I want to make sure that all the conditions that everyone on this council wishes to be added into this approval are notated, okay? So did you have any conditions, Councilman Benson?
I have a hard time, I have a hard time hearing anything he just said, actually, I'm having a hard time.
Okay, do you want to, you want to ask him to repeat himself? Okay.
Yeah, if you could really speak it out there, because I can't...
For Mr. Hyde, would we be able to call a recess and discuss this with you?
Well, what, what I would be recommending, can you hear me now?
Right.
Okay, great. What I would be recommending is that you do this, you approve it with these conditions, and then the conditions in detail need to come back for final approval, so that the conditions that you have described are accurately done in the, in the cup permit. And so what I had down was the regional detention, the ingress egress easement for emergency vehicles, the architectural approval conditions, so that we would have something that was a compatible land use, even if it's just a facade, and then lighting done in such a way that the lighting does not interfere or bounce upon the adjacent property owners, in addition to the seven items that the Planning and Zoning Commission already recommended for conditions.
Okay, so, so those conditions that George Hyde just added to the approval are baked into your...
Motion.
Motion to approve the, the cup for 11A with those conditions, so we...
I want to add something too, I know we don't have a second yet, but we just had this issue with Walmart, where the colors were supposed to be muted, blah, 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 then they remodeled another knot. So, I, what I was asking before the motion was made about the time limit on this, and I hate to keep dragging this out, y'all have been to like more meetings than most of the citizens in Ciblo have been to, but I would almost want to see the architectural, like the facade, before making the decision, because then I think that would address a lot of the citizens' concerns, and seeing at least a draw, something.
One table?
That's what I was recommending, but we have a motion, so...
Well, if he would, if Mayor Portim would want to withdraw that and substitute it with direction to clarify all of the conditions that have been discussed today to staff, then we can bring this back at the next city council meeting with those details for you to be able to vote up or down.
To Ms. Cunningham's point, I mean, I know the, I have a general idea in my head, what like the shrubs and the trees and all that are supposed to be after doing this for all these years, but, you know, the thought came to my mind is, if you're going to have an egress there that's going to hook onto other developments, I mean, this would be an opportunity to, as it is the gateway, I mean, forget the QT, love QT, nothing against QT, but as you come up that road, I mean, you could make this a really nice drive, a tree-lined drive, not one that, trees that uproot the pavement, but you could make this a nice drive in that would flow nicely with what we're trying to do as you reach Ciblo. I don't know that this that's here right now with our shrubs and bushes meets that, right? It seems like they're a little further apart, but maybe we could get something that actually makes it more, I don't know, business park-ish, you know, office spacey kind of look to the turn-in on this egress versus sort of the standard run-of-the-mill like egress road would look like, right? And so I don't know what that would look like, but I think it would be worth at least exploring that, because now you may not even be able to see the storage unit, if you put trees along that egress as it came in, you'd have to know you were going back to the storage unit versus, hey, there's the storage unit here. So, I mean, I, I...
I think part of that too, though...
You know I love storage units, you know I love...
Oh, yeah, none, I don't think any of us are cheering for that, but I think also one of the biggest things we keep hearing is a three-story development, and I think having just a picture of the front would make it clear how big this actually is.
And quite honestly, maybe the back, because it does back up into neighbors, right? So maybe the back is as important as the front is.
Are there people in there? No, they're...
No, it doesn't matter.
Your discretion is only limited by arbitrary and capriciousness, and so if you want four elevations, you know, left, front, you know, left, right, front, back, we can come back with those elevations that include architectural schematics, include landscaping, and then you can adopt it to meet that, substantially meet the, the elements that are shown in those lands, in those elevations.
I think that'd be great, because I think the one over here on 1103, I mean, I wasn't here for that, I was on P&amp;Z, and I think I pretty much remember voting no, but there was, it's just turned into a giant box, right? And I think that's, we don't need that.
And I think that's the, that's the majority of the concerns I'm hearing are, it's going to look like a giant box, it's going to be this ugly thing. I know the elevation we have is...
Mr. Echols, would you like to come up and speak?
This is in your packet. Is that this actual building? Green and gray.
One up, you're good.
Is that this actual building, or is that just a sample?
It's part of the, what they submitted.
Yeah.
Right, and I thought that that was the one on, right off of 35, kind of by McDonald's?
Is this what you are proposing?
No, this is an, excuse me, this is on a Bandera Road, it's a development I'd been involved in many years ago, just a photo and example. I'd like to just say, first of all, that I welcome the opportunity, presenting a rendering, making it visually aesthetic that pleases the community, pleases council, is not a problem at all. I would just like to kind of interject in the process to develop a logical, some, some way that we can, rather than us just coming in and say, what do you think of this? You know, if, for example, if there's a way council can authorize staff to set up meetings, if it's appropriate for Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens and her district, or any, anyone else to participate in a meeting that provides input on an initial draft, you know, we would fine-tune it to address all the concerns. So I'm just offering that, you know, as a process to where we can, you know, not just guess, not just come in here and waste your time back and forth, but if there's a way that the city attorney can approve of...
Well, I think that the most appropriate, because of the general, the council manager form of government, is that you first work with the staff, and, but that can be done through a collaborative effort to make sure that the concepts that we are, are within your, you know, I guess your, your margins.
And is, is it possible for staff to directly request feedback from council? In other words, they receive a draft and they circulate it among council members?
No, that's called a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
So we're not going to do that.
Okay.
But, but what, what we can do is we, once, once we have a model, we can provide, or I can provide legal advice related to that, and then whether or not they find that it's ready to come back to council. And if they tell me that, then I can, I can ask the city manager and mayor to put it on the agenda.
What we would request is to, to work with staff, to take our, our best effort to meet the conditions expressed in a, in a motion for us to come back, and, and the conditions that you've outlined, we will work with staff, and then we'd like to come back for a, one more comment meeting, I mean, council could either vote to approve or, or vote to send us back for one, for one more try, I mean, that's basically, you know, we, we're here to please the community, we're here to do a first-class development, we have the 14 acres under contract, not just the storage piece, we plan to develop this all out, Target's just an idea, we want to, if Target's not the thing for us, that was just an idea that our neighbor suggested, but the emergency access being provided to that neighboring 19 acres is critical for it to be developed, and you could, the, the fire department can verify that. So we just want to be a good member of the community, we want to bring something in that's aesthetically pleasing, and it will allow the remainder of the 14 acres to be developed. I want to mention one more time that our, our capital partner is the founder of Best Buy, so everything's going to be Class A development from start to finish.
Understood. Okay, well, thank you very much for your clarity tonight, sir, we appreciate it, Jeff. All right, so do you want to withdraw your motion and then enter another motion to table, Councilman Hicks, or do you want to take a vote?
Let's take a vote on this.
Okay, all right, so the motion is on the table to approve with the conditions that George Hyde stated, please vote on your screens.
Well, you got a second.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought someone seconded, okay. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens seconded the motion. Motion fails.
Mayor, no vote here.
Oh, no vote, okay, so it's five to two in opposition.
I make a motion to table, pending the design as discussed.
I'll second.
All right, we're going to move on to another item, and then Randy's going to go home. I'm sorry to keep you this late, Randy, I think it's already 8:30, you've been here two hours. So we're going to move on up to 12G, discussion action on potential modification to the financial year 25 CIP Fire Fleet Replacement Plan, Chief Troncoso.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet there, we're going to be discussing the potential modification of FY25 CIP Fleet Replacement Plan. Excuse me. Prior council, action, city council approved FY25 capital improvement program, including $500,000 for the third brush truck for the fire department, that would be for the public safety facility number four. A little bit of the background is that the, the fire apparatus replacement plan has been fundamental for the last several years to improve in safety and reliability, operational efficiency, and compliance with regulation and cost management. City council support to the fund, the fleet replacement through capital improvement, improvement programs, along with the department to particularly order engines and vehicles to provide first-class protection service, services. However, with the plan, there's always time we must pivot, based on the data and real-world events that, that will make informed decisions. Since council approval in the fleet replacement starting in FY21 budget, and on the second page there, it has what, what we've already ordered and received, fire department has experienced unforeseen vehicle breakdowns, extended periods of vehicles out of service, and an incident with one of our fire engines that caught on fire on the scene. Based on these facts, I think it's time to, to deviate from the FY25 apparatus replacement plan, which intended for a third brush truck for fire station number four, and funds to be allocated to purchase fire engine for station three. Just as a reminder, that the standard recommendation is 10-year frontline service, five years at reserve. We currently have two reserve vehicles that either at, are at the 15-year mark or over the 15-year mark. We did already receive two brush trucks, one for station one, one for station three, part of, of the tax note, part of the CIP platform that we've already have implemented. We've already received a 107-foot ladder truck, part of the plan, and the new engine I just received a month ago. We do have two other improvement vehicles in the pipeline, 100-foot platform would be delivered late of 2026, and another engine in the middle of 2026. Going to circle back around to like on February 23rd, 2024, Engine 30, 2018 Ferrari caught on fire while, while at a motor vehicle collision, made a claim with TML insurance, Baguette Claim Service assisted with the, assessed the fire damage, and they claimed it to be 68, 69% damage. So they gave us a check already for $534,598. For the apparatus to be deemed fully totaled, it needed to hit 75% to the adjusted grade value. Upon, upon my request, TML conducted another engine, assessment to the, to the fire engine, which uncovered more damage. Due to the following findings, TML did classify the vehicle as a total loss to the agreed value, the estimated cost for a new vehicle to replace that is roughly about $1 to $1.1 million. So we already received $534,000 from TML, still working on getting the remainder of the money from TML.
So they owe us another $500,000, basically, is what you're saying?
240.
They are a good amount.
A full million?
Yeah, so we're, we're working on towards the remainder of the 200 and roughly...
How old was the truck? How old was it?
It was a, it was a 2018, so it was only...
Okay, 2018, all right, so...
Chief Troncoso, if you could just clarify, the total payment will be what?
Yes, the total payment, if, the total payment at, total payment for total loss, if TML agrees to, was be, would be $774,000, that's what we would get. They've already gave us a partial check of $534,598.
Okay.
So, data-driven decision, making adjustment to the CIP plan to stay on schedule with the fire apparatus replacement plan, city council considers redirecting the funds from the FY25 improvement project of the brush truck of $500,000 to acquire a stock list truck, a vehicle that, that's already in production, to give us...
A ladder truck, right?
Excuse me?
So a ladder truck?
It's a pumper.
A pumper truck, okay.
Yes, it's to replace what was burned.
Okay.
It is, it is my recommendation that investing these funds in this engine, engine purchase will have a greater impact acquiring than the brush truck for station four, which is expected to be built in late 2026.
Understood, chief, so this is what you want? Instead of buying that third brush truck, you want to buy the pumper truck? And so you've got, you've got a lot of the money from the insurance company, you're expecting another quarter million, basically, and then you want to divert these funds from the third brush truck, the 500K to this, right?
Yes, and that would give us roughly to about...
Okay, we understand what you want.
Okay.
All right, do we have any questions on this? I mean, we're in the interest of moving forward, we have a motion?
Make a motion.
We're going to give chief what he wants, right?
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion by Randy Roberts, second by Councilman Mahoney, let's vote. All right, 7-0, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go on up to, actually, Randy, if you would like to call it a night, we fully understand, and then we're going to go to executive session. It was G, 12G, 12G's... 12G is done. All right. We're going to go to 13. The city council will meet in the executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and Section 551.086, meeting concerning municipality-owned utility to discuss the following. A, the deployment of or implementation of critical infrastructure pertaining to the municipal water system. The time is now 8:40. We are going into executive session. All right. The time is 8:58 PM. We are resuming from executive session. No action taken. We are going to roll back to staff update, item number nine. Mr. Reed.
Mayor and council, just give me a second. I am logging back in. Mayor and council, I have this written up, so I'll copy and paste in an email to you. Reminder of the town hall scheduled for October 19th, this Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. I want to say I want to thank each and every one of you who attended the town hall Monday night. I think the staff were exceptionally prepared and ready to answer questions. I would have loved to have seen more participants from the public. But again, this is a commitment to be as available with our residents to educate them on the three propositions. So we are hopeful that Saturday has higher attendance. We have the Meet the Candidate Night at the Noble Event Center tomorrow night from October 16th to 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's being held at our facility. This is not. This is not a city-led Meet the Candidate Forum, but I just wanted to remind everybody. Now, I know I'm expecting to see most of you at that event, too.
And we thank the Chamber for hosting.
It's the Guadalupe County Concerned Citizen Coalition.
Oh, okay, there you go. So they'll be hosting, I'm sorry.
And Ms. Maggie Titterington is the moderator, and that is really the only connection with the Chamber. But, yes, sir, she will be there to be the moderator. On capital improvement projects, the Town Creek Drainage and Hakerville Road project is 90% complete. Pavement markings are scheduled for this week. Signage and mailboxes are scheduled for this week. A walk-through will be scheduled for the end of October. I'm also meeting with Debbie Schneider. She's the concerned resident who spoke at the meeting that I was absent for. I'm meeting her tomorrow on her property. I will tell Council that what I have told her is that I will ultimately inform Council that I am not authorizing the improvement of her second driveway beyond the scope of the project. There's also another property just like hers that had one driveway, not two, approved, and that's the last property on the southern end of Hakerville Road. So if you go south of the bridge, there's another property. We stopped the project between the two driveways. We paved the first one. When I say paved, I mean it's a concrete driveway apron, but did not do his second. But I will tell Council, if you want to authorize a change order for the cost of two additional driveways, if we do one for one property owner, we better do it for the other, then I'll bring that cost estimate. But I'll send that in an email. If one of you say, please put that on a future council agenda, I'll have Mr. Julio Gomez give me an estimate for Texas Sterling to come back with a cost estimate to add two driveways to their scope of work. I told her that very kindly, she understood. But I said, you have three other concerns. I'm going to come out and visit your property, and that's what I'm doing tomorrow with her. And then I will report back to Council on that. Lower Seguin Road, there was some discussion earlier tonight, and I do want Council to hear me that we always communicate with you first before road closure. We always communicate with the residents before that ever approaches. And what I was picking up from Mr. Roberson, who spoke, is he was talking to some of the contractors. So my commitment is that Julio Gomez and I will reach out to him. Mr. Gomez will be the point of contact with him. And we've done this with Hakerville Road and the other roads. So you have my commitment that staff will continue to communicate with impacted residents and businesses on our road projects. I think it goes without saying, though, anytime we disturb a road with residents and businesses, and all of you have seen this in your, on your time on Council, we will upset a resident. We will upset a business, not intentionally, but because it is an inconvenience to have the road that you live on, or you have a business, under construction. But it is temporary, and after these roads are improved and opened, what is amazing is that everybody quickly forgets that inconvenience and appreciates the improved facility. So we will be working with Mr. Roberson and the other property owners along Lower Seguin Road. And with that being said, I'm going to move on to, there's no update on Dean Road and Bolton Road, but I do have the information in here. On Green Valley Road, the low-water crossing improvement, the notice to proceed was issued for November 4th. So that means the contractor will begin work on that project November 4th. The animal care facility, the award of the contract will be on the October 29th City Council agenda. And I'm looking at Mr. Gomez, is that for the portable kennel? That is for the site work, and I'll add that to my notes. On the Tully Road, there's no new update. Again, what I did provide previously is that the sewer design was approved by TCEQ. On Deer Creek Drainage, there's an award of contract, October 29th, your next council meeting, for, again, the Deer Creek Drainage improvements. On FM 1103 Phase 2, all exceptions have been submitted to Techstat for approval, awaiting final determination. And when I say "all exceptions," this is for our utilities that are in their right-of-way, which we believe will not adversely impact their project, but may not meet their strict criteria for separation from improvements. Mr. Foose worked on that with Techstat. Mr. Foose, how long do we expect before we hear back from them on our request for exceptions?
We should start hearing back in the month of November, December this year on the exceptions.
Okay, so we will return to Council with an update as to whether or not they are approving those exceptions, which lower our cost to relocate utilities. And then tonight, I'm going to be, I will be very quick. You have one, two, three, four, five items on your agenda related to capital improvement projects for you to authorize approval of an annual price agreement, to purchase public works equipment, to negotiate professional services agreement, to complete the Siblo South Sanitary Sewer Master Plan, otherwise known as our 5-square-mile CCN area, to execute a contract concerning the construction of the Trailhead Parking Lot at HEB, and also to authorize a contract concerning Green Valley Road Water Main Extension. That is all on that. And then I just want you to know that the UDC rewrite, RFP, was issued October 11th. Submittal deadline is November 11th. We will be in front of you on December 12th with an award of contract recommendation. On the Old Town RFP, we issued that October 15th, just four days after the UDC rewrite. Submittal deadline is November 15th. We expect the award of contract for that to be in front of you in January 2025. And for now, that is all. I have more notes in here for you to read.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. All right, we're going to move on. Oh, yes, please, go ahead, Councilman Hicks.
Other than the two individuals that got up and spoke tonight, I've had a lot of feedback on the Siblo Fest. And not very pleasing. So I just want to bring that up as well. I know that you've got Siblo Fest recap, but I know that you addressed the two individuals that spoke tonight. But there was more than them that have reached out to me on several items. Just like political stuff being on city property that shouldn't have been. But, but other than that, I mean, there's others, a list of it, that I just wanted to make.
If you would like to come and speak with me, Mr. Hicks, you know that I will always listen. I will document our conversation, and I will follow up.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Thank you, Councilman Hicks. All right, we're going to move on to 10A, approval/disapproval of a resolution of the City of Siblo assigning the City Attorney's Office to represent Siblo in the special project of filing the CCN transfer of 3,200 acres of wastewater utility service area with the PUC, Public Utility Commission. George Hyde.
Mayor and Council, this is the, I guess, I believe it's step three of the 10 steps after our settlement agreement with GB Sud. This is going to require predominantly engineering analysis in order to complete an application of which then we will file with the Public Utility Commission. Once that is filed and they are approved, then we will have the, the actual CCN for the 3,200 acres that were to be transferred. This was disclosed and identified during our budget process. Generally, the cost for legal services related to a PUC type of transfer are between $300 and $375 an hour. We've agreed, under our agreement, because of being your city attorney as well, that this special project would be done at $175 an hour.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Councilman Hicks. Do I got a second?
Second.
Got a second by, was that TG Benson? Okay, let's vote on our screens then. Okay, I'm a no vote, so six to zero. Okay, we already got done with B, with 10B, we already got done with 11A. Okay, yeah, we're going to go to 11B. Thank you, Councilman Hicks. Approval/disapproval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 fee schedule. Honored Miranda, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of the budget process, we bring you a fee schedule every year. Inadvertently, we did omit the variance and waivers section in the planning and development fee schedule. So this ordinance adds those fees back into the fiscal year 25 fee schedule, and that is for variance and waiver applications. A change that was recommended this year was changing the zoning variance and the, all other variance applications to reduce the discount from 80% to 50% for homestead applications. And those are the only changes that were recommended this year. The ordinance would be effective after being published two times in the paper, and it would be added to the fee schedule at that time. Are there any questions on, on the changes or?
Yeah, walk me through who's getting, what we're doing on the zone. So you're talking about a zoning variance for somebody who's got, you're using this as their homestead, and they want to change it from what to what? Give me an example of what we're talking about here.
I'm not familiar with the specific planning requirements on that. I don't know if Mr. Reed can expand on what, when that would apply.
Can you repeat the question, Mr. Benson, I was typing?
I'm just curious, what the, give me an example of somebody walking in to get a zoning variance on their homestead. Or, what are we talking about here? We're talking about somebody's got a?
A variance could be from a side yard setback, a front yard setback. That could be a variance because they want to expand their home. That would be a variance for somebody who has a homestead.
So I guess my question is, is... We kind of talked about this the other day at an ordinance meeting. We had a subcommittee ordinance meeting about, I assume this variance has to come to the Council, right? This would be some sort of variance to? I mean, this feels like, more like a board of adjustments issue. If somebody, I mean, this is somebody's home that's already there, it's already zoned. We're changing lot setbacks, we're changing size or dimension of existing structure. I know this is the fee schedule, but I mean, it still feels like it's going to have to go through the entire process versus maybe going to, I mean, we've had cases in the past board of adjustments where somebody wants to go put a deeper patio in, but it changed the, it changed their, you know, no grass, couldn't absorb water, I can't think of it. Impervious turf, thanks. I know I'd get it out eventually. But that became a board of adjustments thing. Is there, so we charged them a fee in planning and zoning to do this, and then it comes here? Or should this be moving to somewhere else?
So currently, it comes to you for final approval. We're rewriting the UDC, and process and approvals will be evaluated then. But for right now, it comes before you.
Okay, and so currently, right now, they get, if they're a homestead, this is my homestead. It's, it was being done at 80% reduction, we're changing that to a 50% reduction. So they're going to pay more to do this variance this year than they did last? Well, it says, what's taken out was an 80% reduce for homestead, and now it's going to be 50% reduced for homestead. So you're actually going to pay more money on your homestead to do this variance? Is that what I might?
Yes, sir, that's, yes. And if Council elects not to do that, then you can keep it at the 80%. You could make it anything you'd like.
Well, how many of these do we do a year? Like, I mean, this is, I mean, you've been in your home a while, and now you're trying to, you know, add a back, a piece of concrete in your back to expand your patio. I mean, this is, I think?
We did three residential last year.
What's that?
We did three residential last year.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't, I don't see what's wrong with the 80%, to be honest with you.
If you remember the one gentleman, the veteran? Let me throw him up, Michael.
Yeah, I remember it.
He came in, and he just wanted to extend his patio out, and he wanted his sidewalks where he could travel on his wheelchair around the side of his house, so.
I think, my opinion is, we should keep the 80% for your homestead.
Okay, you want to make a motion with that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to keep the fee at 80% versus increasing the fee to the 50%.
Understood, all right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Councilman Hicks. Motion by Benson. Please vote. We're, so Benson made the motion, Hicks second.
It wasn't to deny.
To deny or to make a change?
To approve with the modification of the 80% versus 50%.
Yes, for a variance for a homestead property.
So? So what, so currently, this portion of your budget was not included in the budget itself.
The fee schedule.
The fee schedule itself, I'm sorry. And so if you approve the ordinance, then you are authorizing it to go into your fee schedule. And if you, if you modify it from the proposed 50 back to the 80, then that's what it'll go back in as. And so that's what I understand the motion and the second has been.
I make a motion, we put it back in the budget as 80%.
Okay. So do we need to withdraw the motion, George?
No.
Or?
I think that, unless there was any confusion, if there was confusion, you could revoke.
I think he was pretty clear by saying it needs to be 80. And so staff understands that, right?
He said it correctly when he made his motion.
Okay, so we're good. All right, we don't need to move on. 12A, discussion action on the approval of the youth, Siblo Youth Advisory Council applicants. Brian Huggins, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Council approved the bylaws for the Siblo Youth Advisory Council back in June. And after that point, we started developing the application process. The city opened the application process at the end of July, inviting students with a passion for civic engagement to apply. We had 16 applicants within just a couple of weeks who wanted to participate in the Siblo Youth Advisory Council. In addition, we had three parents and guardians step forward and express their desire to volunteer to support this program as well. As described in the bylaws, the Siblo Youth Advisory Council Subcommittee convened to discuss the selection process. And rather than conducting individual interviews, a typical practice for various city boards and commissions, they proposed a different approach to approve the applicants as a whole. The committee recognized that this 16, with the 16 applicants, they had already reached the ideal target number of participants initially envisioned by the Council. This is an excerpt from the bylaws that was approved back in June. It states, "The City Council will designate no more than three members to serve as an interview panel. Once the panel was, has made its selection, it will present the recommendation, excuse me, the recommended candidates to the full City Council for consideration. City Council will make final selection decisions regarding candidates." Based upon the approved bylaws, even though the Subcommittee was designated to serve as an interview panel, they did not necessarily have to interview the applicants individually before bringing the recommendation of approved candidates before the entire City Council. This being the first year of the CAC, and having optimal number of students apply for the position, the Subcommittee members recommended approval of all applicants for the CAC. If there are more applicants in the future years, and Council members prefer to hold individual interviews with those students, that would still fall within the approved bylaw selection process. So the Subcommittee has made the recommendation that they approve all 16 applicants of the Siblo Youth Advisory Council in one fell swoop.
That's fine, but do we not get to see the list of who all applied?
Yes, I've got the list right here.
The parents that applied, and are we going to be doing the background checks on those parents soon?
Yes, so this is for the students themselves?
Yes, and just to clarify, we had two applicants as of September 5th, when we got the list, for the chaperone or the adult participants. One is currently on another board for the city, she's on the animal advisory. The other one is, yes, is a college, or she's got her doctorate, she's been at Council a few times. So they've both been here before, but they would both need the background checks.
That's correct.
He filled it out himself, so that's what you get. I'm wearing a wig today.
Yeah, this looks like a great list of, uh... Yeah, this looks like a great list of future leaders. Fully support these folks. Do we have a motion?
He's homeschooled.
Can I get a motion to approve these folks? Got a motion.
I am the attorney.
Okay, so, all right, so we got a motion by Councilman Mahoney, a second by Councilwoman Six zero, these fine young ladies and gentlemen are approved for the youth council.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I want to make sure they get the message this week, and look forward to getting them on board.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Brian. All right, we're going to move on to twelve B, discussion action on authorizing the city manager to negotiate a professional services agreement with Fries and Nichols to complete the Sibolo youth, I'm sorry, Sibolo South, Sibolo South sanitary master sewer plan. Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This council item is part of the overall plan in providing the sanitary sewer services as part of the GVSUD and City of Sibolo Comprehensive Settlement Agreement for the acquisition of five square miles of the sewer service area. On May twenty-second, we submit, we issued an RFQ to get responses back for personal, professional services for the sanitary sewer south master plan, and we did receive five consultants that responded to this RFQ with Fries and Nichols being the awarding candidate with an average score of ninety out of a hundred points. This was based off of six criteria that we based it on, which was the firm introduction, experience of the firm with the similar work and scope, the project manager that would be assigned to this project, the technical professionals that would be assigned to it, and support staff, and their approach to the project. And taking all that into consideration, we did select Fries and Nichols as the selected firm for this project. Are there any questions?
Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve twelve B as written.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Hetzel. Motion carries, six zero. I know you've got a few of these, don't you, Mr. Gomez?
Yes.
All right, next up is twelve C, discussion action on the FY twenty-five CIP road projects and public works equipment. Mr. Gomez.
Yes, so during the May twenty-eight council meetings, city staff requested to accelerate the remaining four road projects, which were Silverwing, Firebird Lane, or Firebird Run, Green Valley One, and Green Valley Two. City council did approve the acceleration of these projects in FY twenty-five to include the projects that were already assigned for FY twenty-five, which were Deer Creek Boulevard and Town Creek. In addition, city council during the budget cycle approved the purchases of the equipment that we need in the FY twenty-five plan. Couple of questions that we did have for city council as we moved forward with this was, did city council want to authorize the opportunity to fund up to five hundred thousand for a sidewalk on Town Creek Road? And if city council had any questions in regards to the public works equipment that we have purchased for FY twenty-five, that we do plan on purchasing? And the city council wants staff to reapply for the recreational trails grant for park improvements. As you know, we went out for this grant last year, and we didn't get it, but we do have that funding still in our CIP plan. And I know at some point, Mr. Parsons and Mr. Howard will come back and give an update on the parks program, and at which time, if this is something that the council wants us to move forward with, with applying for this grant again, that could be part of the presentation and showing how that overall plan would work doing that. So I guess the question would be for council, do y'all want to, want us to reapply for that grant? Do y'all want to authorize the opportunity to fund a sidewalk project for Town Creek in addition to the road project, up to five hundred thousand? And do y'all authorize the purchase of our public works equipment in FY twenty-five?
That's very vague, that last one. So much equipment, I mean...
Yeah, so when the council packets, we did put down the pieces of equipment that were, that we did put into the FY twenty-five program for approval.
And just as a reminder to council, we dove really deep into equipment during the FY twenty-four budget. You conducted workshops over at the Noble Group Event Center where we imagined the future of our CIP, and you had Chief Troncoso talking about his fleet replacement, you had Chief Andres talking about police fleet replacement, and you had Tim Foose going through the public works replacement. So this is a list that we dove deep into over a year ago, and we're just being transparent, bringing back, saying this is the equipment in a series of five years that public works needs so that it keeps its fleet up to date, insofar as we can be up to date, so that the staff is more productive when working in the field. So that's, that's it on the public works equipment. So each year, in this five years, we have other equipment based upon those presentations.
Did you want to make a motion, Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens? With the five hundred grand for the sidewalk?
I do, I do like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five CIP road projects and public works equipment as detailed.
Did you include the sidewalk?
Oh, yes, and to, oh, and the sidewalk up to five hundred thousand for Town Creek Road.
Okay, all right, so we got a motion.
Need to mention the public works equipment and the...
Yes.
Did you?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm not hearing a thing over here today, I don't...
Okay, so we got a motion on the table by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens, and a second Motion carries, six zero. Be nice to have that sidewalk. All right, I'm going to move on to the next one, twelve D, discussion action to allow the city manager to approve an annual price agreement for road construction materials with Bron-Tex materials for in-house public works projects. Mr. Gomez.
Yes, so on August twentieth, we advertised an ITB for an annual price agreement for road construction materials. We did receive two bids back. One was from Bron-Tex Materials, and the other one was Vulcan Construction Materials, with Bron-Tex coming in at the lowest pricing for the items that we put on the ITB. I did include the items that we did put out for bid in the ITB, in case y'all do have any questions.
Make a motion, we approve towards the twelve D?
Twelve B.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve as written for twelve D and by T.G. Benson, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Cunningham. All in favor, six zero, okay. All right, moving on to twelve E, discussion action to allow the city manager to execute a contract with Presidio Contracting LLC for the construction of the Trailhead parking lot for the pond at HEB.
Yes, so on August twenty-eighth, we re-advertised the ITB for the Trailhead parking lot. As y'all recall, the first one that we sent out, we did inform council that the bids came in higher than what we were expecting, so we did do a revision on the scope to remove the GO pave solutions that they had recommended, and we went with a full concrete parking lot. We did receive the bids back on September twenty-sixth, with Presidio Contracting being the lowest responsible bidder. And we did include the recommendation letter from Colliers Engineering recommending that this contract be awarded to Presidio with the lowest bid at two hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Motion to approve twelve E.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion on the table by Councilman Hicks, a second by Councilman Benson. Let's vote. That will be nice to have a parking lot at the HEB Pond. All right, next up is F, discussion action to allow the city manager to approve a contract with JM Pipeline LLC for the Green Valley Road Water Main Extension. Mr. Gomez.
Yes, so on August twenty-sixth, we advertised a contract for the extension of the twelve-inch water main along Green Valley Road. On September twenty-sixth, we had the bid opening with six bids submitted, and the lowest responsible bidder being JM Pipeline LLC with a base bid of seven thousand eight hundred, seven hundred eighty thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. And we did include the recommendation of award from Westwood Engineering, along with the bid table for council to review that as well, if there are any questions.
Any questions for council? If not, can I entertain a motion?
Recommend approve twelve F as written.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion on the table by T.G. Benson, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Six zero, approved.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to H, twelve H, discussion action in authorizing the city manager to sign the inter-local agreement for fire protection services with Guadalupe County and the city of Sibolo.
Agreement with Guadalupe County, there is a quick PowerPoint, if they can pull it
Any questions on this, Joel? I know we had some contention in the past, but I think we've overcome those, and I think we're getting a fair amount, right? Go ahead, Councilman Hetzel.
Are we being reimbursed fully?
Yes, sir, we are, and as soon as they pull up the PowerPoint, I'll show you that. There it is, all right, we'll proceed forward. So presentation overview, a letter was sent to the Guadalupe County Fire Marshal, which was attached in your packet, which show our ETJ and county responses for the past four years, and then inter-local revenue increases over the past four years as well. On April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, council directed staff to proceed with negotiation on a four-year contract, excuse me, FY twenty-four to FY twenty-six. Request was sent to the Guadalupe County Fire Marshals on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, Civil Fire Department worked directly with Guadalupe County to negotiate a ten percent increase, which reflected thirteen thousand three twenty-five. So if you look at FY twenty-four, it was one thirty, one hundred and thirty-three thousand two forty-five for FY twenty-four, and then FY twenty-five is one forty-seven, five seventy. So if you look, a hundred and ten calls in the county and ETJ, ninety-three of them were responded by Civil Fire Department, six of those out of the hundred and ten were responded by Shirts Fire Department, and eleven calls for service were canceled and routed. So it was just, we got toned out, and so there was no response. So Civil Fire Department responded to ninety-three calls for service, and at thirteen thirty-seven per call, it equaled up to a hundred and twenty-four thousand three forty-one for the year. And that did include the eighteen dollars per the dispatch, the number that we came up with because of the dispatch increase. Sorry, so the number does reflect the eighteen dollars per call for service that was added for the dispatch increase?
So since you brought dispatch up, right, obviously dispatch costs went up this year. If, if you were to guess, right, our dispatch call's not eighteen dollars now, or whatever that you just said, so it's going to be much larger, right? Based on our new dispatch stuff from City of Shirts, aren't we getting Shirts dispatch? Or were you talking about a different dispatch?
No, we're talking about Shirts dispatch.
So that cost went up significantly, right? And this includes the cost?
Yes, and that includes the cost, I added that.
With the new, with the new cost?
Yes.
Okay, that's what, all right. Because I, I think my concern is going over time, is that we did this three-year deal, Mr. Hetzel, I've had to talk about this. I mean, you know, I think three years is going to be too much, because I have a suspicion, maybe not, but I don't think our, we've seen the end of increases on services. So I think going forward, whoever's sitting here ought to really look at maybe doing these annually, or work on a better schedule with the county, because I could see where you could end up upside down. I mean, we, we're up this year ten, eleven grand or whatever, but I could see pretty quick with the cost of this, it could, it could snowball quickly, so.
Because we're hiring one more firefighter if they approve the three cents, remember? And so that's, you know, more cost that we're taking on as a fire department.
Yeah, we just need to be careful with this three-year deal.
So make it one year, is what you're saying?
I think, I think it almost needs to be negotiated annually, because you get real costs, at least based on the year prior, and, and, you know, if there's, if there's any sort of increases elsewhere in fuel, or, you know, exorbitant things that go crazy, then, then you're not stuck to a three-year deal where you're losing money every year, just hold your nose trying to deal with it. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, because you said something about dispatch being in there, and I didn't understand where you were going, so appreciate it.
The next slide here reflects the calls for service, indicates that FY twenty-three, we're at one fourteen, FY twenty-three, we're at ten, so that we're averaging between one, one hundred to one fourteen in that area. These are increases over since the twenty-twenty, we've steadily increased, and as you can see in the chart there. And then this is Exhibit A of the response area. So civil has requested for funding of a hundred and forty-six thousand five seventy for year two of the three-year contract for FY twenty-five. This additional funding is due to the residential commercial growth for Guadalupe County and ETJ. Staff does recommend the two-year agreement of one forty-six, five seventy for FY twenty-five. Any questions?
T.G., did you want to make a motion and make it one year instead?
We signed the three-year deal last year, so.
We'll finish out this contract, and then in our...
Then we'll look at annual next time? Okay, I get it.
Or in a future ILA, have provisions that talk about us actually looking at actual cost on a year-to-year basis.
Yeah, because there's another question I have of this, is maybe not germane, and again, the lawyer might shut me down, but these are calls based on, you go out, this is what it costs to go out on a call, right? I mean, I think you go out there, you get canceled, that's the still, you know, that's a call, right? If you go out there and you end up having to call six fire trucks out to put out a massive fire, that's a totally different cost than you go out and do something small, and you're like, all right, it took an hour, and we're back, right? So I mean, I think it would be much more useful going forward to have these, something in the ILA to say, we can renegotiate annually or based on actual cost.
So on those calls that we actually, like, for example, Interstate Ten, we've had, we, historically, we've built the eighteen-wheeler or the business to recruit some costs as well.
So what, what I've found to be successful in my career is a true-up in the agreement, so that you identify a cost, which is a projected cost, and then at the end of the quarter, end of the year, like we did with the SRO, is, then we look at what the actual cost was and then adjust. And so that way, you keep, you know, both sides gets a fair shake.
Right, and I, and I think that in this case, you know, the county's looking at this, they're probably not, but they're looking at this, they say, well, we gave away eleven grand this year, and they're probably okay with it, but at the same time, you know, really, like we did with the SRO, it's probably a much better model for these inter-local agreements,
All right, any more discussion? Can I get a motion?
No, I make a motion to pass twelve H as written.
Okay, we got a motion on the table by Councilman Benson, second by Councilman Hicks. All right, approved six zero. Moving on to twelve I, discussion feedback on adopting the twenty-twenty-one International Fire Code with amendments. Chief Troncoso.
Yes, bringing this back around from almost a year now, and if we can...
I save everybody a lot of time. I've got two pages of comments. So I would like, I mean, I'm not saying, don't do the brief, I'm just saying, I'd like to have an opportunity to submit the twelve pages of comments before we have a presentation on what needs to be done, or two pages, I didn't say, mean to say twelve. There were a hundred and ninety amendments, if I understand what I read, there was a hundred and ninety things that I assume Mr. Hyde's office went in and looked at, or got requests from to look at, and I have two pages of questions. And rather than air two pages of questions, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to get them to you before tonight, I'm busy, but if we could maybe just, I mean, we're not in any huge hurry that I know of, if we could just maybe table this, so I can get those out, and then...
And the next one, too, do you want to table I and J?
Yeah, I have less comments than I, I haven't gotten through all that one yet, but right now, just on the fire thing, I've got a couple of pages.
Okay.
So if we could just...
Just make a motion to table I and J.
Table twelve I.
Yeah, please don't add action items.
Okay, well, maybe if we could bring those... Well, maybe if we could bring those back, I mean, I know that it said on there, do we agree with bringing back an ordinance? I, I will at some point agree with bringing back an ordinance, but I would like.
All right.
These two pages of questions answered before we build an ordinance.
So, right, tonight was just an overview of the amendments as proposed. We were looking for the questions and the feedback that you would have, and when we have answered those questions, we would bring back the ordinance, so.
Yeah, I, I, that's fine with me, I just, if, if you want to give the presentation, fine, I don't, that's up to you, I just know that I got like.
I'd, I'd like to do the presentations, just so we can be, uh, through with the presentations, and then the only thing we'd come back to talk about are the specific questions that council has.
All right, it's nine forty, how long do you think this will take? The presentation?
Hello?
How, how long do you think the presentation will take? It's nine forty right now. We think twenty minutes, or ten?
No, it's.
He has nine slides.
It's nine, yeah, it's really nine.
Nine, nine slides, okay, let's roll through it, yep, let's go.
Okay, here we go. So, overview international fire code, community comparisons of adopted international fire codes, ICC significant changes between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-one IFC code, feedback and direction. Ask the mayor and council to keep these questions in mind as we go through the presentation. Does council want to add any questions about significant changes of the FY, of, not FY, of twenty twenty-one international fire code presented, which Councilman Benson said he does? Does count, does, does mayor and council support moving forward with adopting of the ordinance on the twenty-nine? As you see here, here's the comparison, we would be moved from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one, Guadalupe County's, Sages twenty eighteen, and Bronfus twenty eighteen, Eurocity twenty twenty-one, Converse, Livo, Windcrest, San Antonio are all in, uh, international fire code of twenty twenty-one. Moving from the twenty fifteen to, to the twenty twenty-one code, here's a additional new chapter to the section, mobile food preparation vehicles, uh, vacuum manufacturing, three-D printing, artificial combustible vegetation there, Chapter seven, revision and expansion of fire and smoke protection features, Chapter nine, fire protection life safety systems added section as well, gas detection system, mask notification system for colleges and universities and campus, and of course, Chapter twelve there, a new chapter for any emergency systems there. More additionals, Chapter thirty-eight, higher education laboratories, thirty-nine, processing and education for facilities, Chapter four, new chapter, storage and distillery spirits and wines, Chapter thirty-seven, flammable and combustible, combustible liquids and added selections. Did it move? Nope. Sorry. Um, amend the fire code from twenty twenty-one, additional fire code corrections from earlier twenty twenty-one edition misprints, um, other code and selections, mirroring or being referenced in the fire code, twenty twenty-one international fire code, chapters one, two, three, four, nine, ten, and thirty-three, twenty twenty-one international plumbing code, Chapter six, twenty twenty-one international mechanical code, Chapter two and six. And these are the questions that are proposed at the beginning, and that's pretty good.
Can I just have a few comments?
Go ahead, George.
Um, so, with regard to the fire code, what we did generally is, we, we handled all the provisions addressing liability, which conflicted with existing state law, cause we can't change state law, and so we got those removed and made clarity on that. Rather than amend each SIBLO-specific provision, such as informant, or enforcement fee schedules, penalties, Board of Appeals, work orders, those things are all handled by specific language that you already have in position, so we, we removed all of those portions, because you have laws that are more applicable to it. The, um, building regulations that were in the fire code, we removed, because they're building code regulations, there's a lot of overlap in between the two organizations. The emergency services recovery fee is an example, special events were removed from fire code, cause they, they don't relate. We're recommending Chapter twenty-six be renamed the Emergency Management and Emergency Services to extend the application of the chapter from only addressing civil emergencies to provide location for fire department ordinances and other related statutes. Fire code official is defined as fire chief or his designee, all references to fire chief, fire marshal, officer of the fire department, third-party inspectors, et cetera, were replaced with fire code official or, uh, for simplification, because any designate, designated person by the fire chief can serve that, that role. Provisions in conflict with the employment and appointment of fire code officials were revised to comply with, uh, local law, the, and then we went through the property maintenance code and the other building code provisions, but as a, as a high-level evaluation, that's what we did with the fire code, is try to streamline it and rely on the subject matter expertise of the, uh, fire department with regards to what provisions they want to put in place. We organized it that way to interact smoothly with the rest of your codes. That's fire code. Oh, and this is the fire code, if anyone wants to read it, that's spare time.
You want to take that with you, TG?
I got it all.
That's a lot harder to work with that way.
I won't tell you where it was when I read it. I was hoping you'd do it sometime.
You stay until four in the morning reading that, don't you?
I'd be fast.
All right. Any questions on this?
Yeah, I look forward to getting your comments.
Yeah, I, I think you've explained some of them that I have, because there were large swaths in our, on the ordinance that you made, that said deleted sections, and to be honest, where I was reviewing this, I didn't have the opportunity to go find those sections, and that may be what you, what I did, that's not all my comments, but there's several that are like, why are we deleting, you know, twenty-five sections of this manual, right? So, that, that may be the reason, so that's a good explanation, I'll still send you those in case there is something that I.
Yeah, we'll go through them.
Yeah, okay.
If you would, for any member of council, send that to George, myself, and copy Chief Troncoso, and we will collectively respond to all of those questions.
Sounds good. Anyone else have any commentary, other than TG Benson, on these codes? All right, we, we done with this item? We good?
Yep.
Okay. And then, what about Jay? We good with that one, too?
So, building codes next. And, as he steps up, I want to give you my, my quick joke. When I first looked at this, I thought it was a volume of the Game of Thrones, because of all the little pieces, that's, I thought were deaths in, in the code, so, anyway. But I'm.
All right, so we're on to Jay, right? Discussion feedback on adopting the twenty twenty-one international codes for the twenty twenty-three national electric code. Mr. Hanson.
Yes, sir. Let's see if we have this up here. Um, I can shoot through this as fast as you would like, if you stop me for any questions, please do, and I'll, I'll expand on it. Hmm, okay.
You gotta step on the bottom.
Oh, Jay. Jay. Yeah, that's it. It says IFC, but it should say I N C. No, J. Not I, you're right.
Nope.
Maybe try to pull it up on the bottom.
It's pulled up on the bottom.
Indeed, yeah.
Nope.
Nope.
I saw it. It's actually a PDF that's right here, Jay.
Yeah, good try. Yeah. I bought it.
Okay, I'll have to scroll, which is fine. Okay, I'll let you. Okay. Twenty twenty-one international building codes and the twenty twenty-three national electric code. Sorry for the scroll. Um, in this presentation, I'll give a high-level comparison over the code updates, uh, another community comparison, I will touch on ISO, the state mandated national electric code, and I'll seek feedback in direction. During the presentation, I won't get in the weeds on specific slides with specific updates, unless you request further explanation, but please let me know. Here's a quick comparison, we are, um, last amongst our neighbors, which is one of the reasons we are bringing the twenty twenty-one codes up. Another reason, uh, would be the ISO scores, so ISO has developed the BCEGS, uh, it, they use this score to evaluate building departments in the jurisdiction to see what they have adopted, so a higher ISO, higher BCEGS score, each score is a higher ISO score, and that's what we're shooting for here. Adopted the twenty-ones will also meet FEMA flood-resistant provisions, this will keep citizens' properties safe and streamline their review process. Quick graphic of the codes that we are adopting, this is what the books look like, and here they are written out for you, just in case. So significant changes, you may ask, what kind of code changes come with building code update? And a lot of them have to do with definitions, so we are, they're changing the definition of certificate of occupancy, for example, and what they're doing is, if you increase your level of activity, uh, you must receive a new certificate of occupancy, so a call center with a hundred employees is much different than a call center with three hundred employees, we need to reevaluate their, their means of egress, furniture they have, all those types of things, so this is a new update. It also provides provisions for new locking mechanisms in educational buildings, so now that you, like a hotel, when you're in a hotel, you lock that from the inside, throw that latch, um, that's similar to what they're allowing in schools now, so can be locked, unlocked from the inside, but not from the outside. Other significant changes, um, mixed occupancy buildings, assembly spaces are assessed differently, all of these kind of come with the advancing industry, we learn new things, so we update codes. Um, we learn, things happen, as in risk categories within assemblies, so they alter the code to make them more safe for a high amount of people. They're addressing deadloads on top of buildings, soil uplift is now finally addressed in the new codes, and they're adding puzzle rooms, or, um, what do you call them? Anyway, quest club.
Escape rooms.
Escape rooms, yes, so a lot of times they'll put materials on the walls that are flammable, that wasn't known before, so now this is addressed. IRC, International Residential Code, a lot of changes here. For instance, glazing or safety glass, they're always kind of moving those around where they're required, where they're not required. Shipping containers, we see an increase in the use of those for commercial sake, even for homes, so now these are addressed, different ways that you can live in a shipping container. Water-resistant barriers for accessory structures, stairways for decks, making sure you get out of a deck safely, um, but these are all just common items that we see every three years. Additional methods for testing plumbing, additional safety measures for gas, uh, gas appliances and gas fixtures within a home. Energy is always touched on, we're always becoming more energy efficient, and so, again, we're bringing in, um, different high-efficiency lightings, different ways to test a house, see how energy efficient it is, different ways to insulate. Gas, gas appliances, residential ranges, cook appliances, we cannot have commercial now, there's a whole slew of ways a commercial range can go wrong in a residence, so that's no more. The electric code, so one of the changes would be arc, or arc faults, um, needed on larger two-fifty-volt appliances, so dryers, if you were to have a car charging port in your garage, um, you now need the surge protectors, those are now standard, and an emergency shut-off on the exterior of the house for emergency responders. Now, now we're getting into the NEC, which is a separate book from the international codes. The NEC is a state mandated code, the state man, adopts the newest version of the NEC every September first, every three years, so currently, we're on the twenty seventeen, the state mandates twenty twenty-three, so it kind of puts building, uh, departments in a bind sometimes, um, well, we need to, we need to follow the state, but you only have the seventeen adopted, you know, so, um, it's, it's okay in SIBLO, but it's not okay in the state, and that's kind of what we're trying to get away from here. Uh, some of these are overlapped from the IRC adoption, again, GFCI protection for larger receptacles around the house, uh, GFCI protection needed in damp rooms, mud, mud rooms, essentially, or wash station, now we have pet washing stations on some of the higher-end homes, which, so now you need a GFCI right there, too. With this update, we are building on the twenty fifteen code ordinance that we adopted in twenty eighteen, but we're updating the reference years on all of them, we are adding our new increased foundation requirements to the ordinance, and we are also removing anything that's been made redone by the new code, so we're not eliminating any code, we're just extra language we don't need, streamlining the, the amendment, the ordinance. So, any questions on what I've presented here? Seems like we have some questions coming from, for the IFC, and, uh, but when those are all addressed, we'll have come back at the same time with the building codes. Thank you very much.
And I just have a few comments, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I just have a few comments.
Oh, go ahead, George, I'm sorry.
So, uh.
Thank you.
We have a two-hundred-and-seven-page international code redline that shows you all the changes that, that we've made since the original creation of the, the document by Matt and the building officials. Um, I can circulate that to the city council, um, if you'd like it. We redrafted the, the, Article fourteen to compartmentalize each one of the codes, so that if you're wanting water, or water, or plumbing code provisions, you go to the plumbing code section of fourteen. If you want the electrical portion, you go to the electrical portion, and they're not all mixed up, you don't have to go hunt and peck to find them now, so we hope that we, this will make it more usable, usable and more, more convenient for the trades. Um, that goes all the way down to, um, I think there's fourteen different subsections in Article fourteen now. Uh, we deleted sections that conflict with current codes or cause unnecessary confusion, such as appellate rules and so forth, when we already have appeal provisions, um, through our department, our, uh, Board of Adjustment. Uh, we adjusted some of the wording to reflect the intent of the code, uh, to avoid accidental deletions, for example, original draft of IBC two oh two defined, uh, definitions were deleted, while all of two oh two except those listed and only amended those listed in several other provisions, so basically, we cleaned up the definitions so that it wasn't over-inclusive or under-inclusive. Um, we edited for conciseness, readability, um, additional provisions for construction, uh, documentation and site plan, so that it would be considered, uh, consistent. Questions issued, such as there's junk vehicle provisions in here, but we already have a specialty junk vehicle ordinance that is under review currently, so we took that out, so that, um, you know, we, again, are trying to make it uniquely, uh, set for SIBLO. And, um, that's the overview of the, the, uh, building code, and I just want to just mention at, at the end, that when we say building code, it's really like fourteen different codes. And so, you have the fire code, and then you have the building code, which is a conglomerate of all the codes, based on the, the type of, uh, construction you're doing. Thank you.
Could I, could I just ask one other little ask when we bring these back as ordinances? The, the one thing that I could see the most frustrating about changing building codes is an implementation and how that's gonna happen, uh, so, you know, I mean, I, I would assume that if somebody's already got an electrical permit out, and they've, they've roughed it all in, that we're not gonna, oh, we just passed the new rules, so, so I, I just, if we could have an overview when the ordinances come back of how this is gonna be implemented, and what kinds of effects it's gonna have to the, the builder, the person buying the home, whatever, that way, that way, it's pretty clear when, when and how we plan to, to do this. Uh, you know, the, the electrical stuff, like you said, is, is twenty twenty-three, most of them are probably doing twenty twenty-three work anyway, because they're mandated by state law, but as we look at some of these other things we're changing, it would just be nice that we know what, what the implementation schedule and how you plan to implement it as we change it.
And briefly, on the national electric code, since you brought it up, just, the rule is, if you start that house in any way as an electrician, you can maintain the previous code. So, if it starts after.
I assume, I don't, and I would, I would think that's, I just, I didn't want to have a problem where people started something and then.
Sure.
Get word, no, it's.
Yeah.
Pull that next wire out.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, and it's dependent on their permit, so if I got a permit to revise something in my house, and now I want to go do something in my barn, and so I come and file another permit, well, that new permit for the barn is going to be a different standard, um, but, uh, but definitely, we don't change the, the, the rules in the middle of a project, but if you start adding on to the project, you may end up with the new ones.
I just want that part to be clear, you could have a barn that's in phase two, right? And now we've got that to Google, and you're gonna be answering questions, you know.
Another.
Bring that back, you know.
Look at how that would be implemented, that would be, that'd be really good.
Another question for the council, when we come, bring it back, is, um, do you want to create an effective date, but then a, a separate enforcement date? So, in other words, you basically have a leniency period of like ninety days, saying, hey, there's a new code, you gotta do this, so it's not against the rules for you to do this, but you still have to obey the code. So, it's not against the rules for you to do this, but you still have to obey the code.
We don't have to publish this in the newspaper, nothing like that, do we?
You have to publish the caption.
And then 30 days.
Okay, let's go forward.
Over a year, this is coming, so they know.
Move forward with it. I mean, sooner the better.
All right. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move on to 12K, discussion presentation, feedback on a follow-up presentation related to school traffic and a possible amendment to the city's no parking ordinance. Brian Huggins, welcome again, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So, at the July night council meeting, you received a presentation related to the school traffic on Borgfeld Road and Bentonwood Ranch Drive. There was a draft amendment to the current no parking ordinance at that time for council to consider prohibiting on-street parking on those two streets. Council did not take any action related to demending the ordinance at that time, but did direct staff to come back to council after the school year commenced to evaluate traffic concerns at Wieterstein, Slaughter, and any other school with potential traffic concerns. So, during this time, staff did reach out to SCUC representatives to inform them of the city's concerns with parking at Wieterstein Elementary School and other schools. SCUC ISD did distribute a letter to parents asking them to find alternatives to parking on the streets, and specifically not to block any driveways to residents or businesses if they did in fact have to park on the streets. To date, the city has not received any complaints about on-street parking since the beginning of the FY24-25 school year. But I wanted to do a little presentation this night to show you some photos I took in the last couple of weeks of school traffic in the afternoon, which is usually the concern with picking up students. So, what I'm looking for this evening is, does council have an appetite for making that amendment to the no parking ordinance that was brought to council back in July, based on information received tonight? So, this is Wieterstein Elementary School, photos I took a couple of weeks ago. The timeframe is between 2:25 PM and 3:10 PM. School is actually let out at 3:25. So, at 2:25 PM, there were about six or seven trucks, cars parked out on Borgfeld Road. You can see the little yellow-colored diamonds in the picture on the bottom with the trees. If you look at the bigger picture on top, you can see where the little diamonds are at, so you can kind of get a reference where those cars were parked. I went back at 2:45, and there were more vehicles parked out there. Again, the blue diamonds are denoted on the top, so you can see where those vehicles are at. And then when I went back at 3:10 PM, they were all the way down Borgfeld, across Bentonwood Ranch, and down Borgfeld toward Ron Petey Garden. So, that's kind of where the traffic was building up, as you can see, from that time of 2:25 to 3:10. But I will denote that they were not blocking that driveway to that office space that was under construction at that time. So, they did follow that recommendation. Watts Elementary School, I went out there at 2:30, went back at 3:05. There was no significant traffic issues. There were a couple of vehicles, about five parked out on the street. The rest of them went down into Alridge Park there and then back onto the school property, which is denoted in that blue line on the top picture there. Slaughter Intermediate, there was no traffic at all on the streets. It was all on that drive, long drive going on to Lane Slaughter Parkway into the school So, again, I'm just coming back like you asked, to present you with the information on what traffic's looked like since school started, and looking for direction from council on, you want to bring back the no parking ordinance for those two streets, or just kind of leave it as it is for now? And if we have any more complaints or any issues, bring it back at that time.
So, your opinion, it's not much of an issue, right? As far as what you've observed at these times, taking pictures, you think it's a pretty minor issue?
They weren't causing any really significant traffic concerns on Borgfeld. The other two schools, I don't see an issue at all. There is not significant parking, queuing area at Wieterstein, there just isn't. There's nothing that we can do to make that any better. So, again, they're not blocking the driveway, they weren't blocking the driveway that day. I can't say they're not going to block the driveway at any other time. But if they do block the driveway, that's a violation of the law, and we'll go out and address it with the police department. So, again, at this time, I don't see that it's a significant concern. If we start receiving lots of complaints, then we might come back and ask council to consider it again at that point. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
They can't block any roadways, correct?
I'm sorry, sir? They can't block a driveway or a street?
B-acting, and you've got the train tracks blocked, and you've got people that want to come out and possibly turn up towards HEB, but you've got cars parked there waiting for the...
Yeah, they should be allowing, they should be allowing the space there for vehicle traffic going back and forth on the streets.
But that's a law. They can't block the roadway, correct?
That's correct.
I wanted to make sure. Okay.
Okay. And so, you said earlier that a letter went out to the parents that go to that school to do the pickup to not block the driveway, right? For that new business that's being built right now?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mosey with SCUC told me they sent a letter out to the students' parents at that time.
And I think that was our main concern earlier. You know, I remember TG had made a motion about, you know, no parking over there, and I think that's our main concern, and I agree with that. I don't want that business to be blocked, as far as, you know, for the customers that are coming out of that business to be able to leave the business, they need clearance. So, yeah, as long as that's not happening and we're okay, then I think we should leave it as is, right? Unless anyone has any other thoughts? Maybe you do. Yeah? Well, we'll see, you know, once it's actually open. Yeah, we'll see in real-world scenarios. I mean, right now, they're respecting, you know, the construction trucks that could be coming in and out, but...
I'm respecting them a lot.
Yeah. All right. All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Brian Huggins. Appreciate it, sir.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next up is 12L, discussion feedback on the proposed updates to the FY25 to 27 Council Strategic Plan Implementation Matrix and Draft Annual Report. Mr. Reed.
Mayor and Council, good evening. When I was at the ICMA conference, Dustin Morris gave you a presentation, and in your packet were the draft versions of your annual report, tracking our performance and executing on your highest priorities for FY24, and the draft version of the FY25 strategic plan. Tonight, I'm not asking for any action, I'm just asking, if you've had time to look at those reports, do you have any comments? If you have those comments now, I can record those. If you want to feed those to me via email, I'll make sure that Dustin Morris and I are cleaning up the documents before we bring it back to you at the October 29th meeting.
So, I looked at it. It looked really good. He did a very good job with the design and everything and the layout. The recommendations made sense. I don't know if this is the time to add something to our strategic plan. Is it?
It's your strategic plan, and yes, if you wanted to add a priority.
Okay. So, one thing, one thing that's come up in discussion on the storage units is deep lots for economic development. And if we could add something into our strategic plan on like identifying and looking at those lots that are deep, like they go back quite a bit from the main road, specifically those that are zoned commercial, I know there's at least one right across the street from Stone Brook that has struggled with putting anything in commercial. And then obviously, this one now up by QT, the deep lot. So, if we could identify that, I think that as we grow and as we have more businesses want to come in, those are going to continue to be a problem. And in the past, the solution that was brought in by developers was, well, we'll do commercial on the front, and then we'll put apartments in the back. And so, we don't want to get a whole bunch of those. I think if we're more clear on where they're located and kind of have a plan moving forward, that would be beneficial.
So, I'm writing this down. I want to make sure I'm capturing it. I'll find the right location in the strategic plan. But you said evaluate deeper lots along major thoroughfares, such as FM 1103, for viable land development patterns, is the way I would describe this. I'll get with Ms. Kelsey Jordan Lee. We did do some of that analysis during the comprehensive plan. I'll bring that back. I'll ask her to give me that material, bring that back, so that, and this won't be in the next couple of months, as we're wrapping, as you heard tonight, we're trying to get the two RFPs with proposals back in front of you by the end of this year or January. But we'll bring that back, say, the first quarter of calendar year '25, and then we can revisit this issue that you're bringing to my attention, if that's the desire of the council.
That'd be great. And I know that it's somewhat addressed in the Economic Development Master Plan, but I think that if we, we really just need to know where those lots are, so we can anticipate the questions and the things that are presented to us, and have a better plan for it. Like, what is acceptable? Do we, are we okay with putting apartments behind a McDonald's or something like, I don't know? But just having a plan and knowing where those are, because it is, especially if 1103 gets finished, I have a feeling we're going to have more developers come in and want to build along a newly improved 1103. Yes, and so, we want to be prepared for that and not just be willing to accept whatever comes to us.
And if that's the direction of the council, I will get this into the strategic plan.
Yeah, so, you know, a deep dive on what's possible in these deep lots. And, you know, I know that we're constantly, or at least our EDC is constantly engaging with consulting firms and different retail strategy firms. So, that could be something that we could incorporate into a future RFP, you know, for, we're constantly working with those types of experts, right? In the retail market, and so that could be something that we want to do a deep dive on, you know, in the future.
If I can remind council, remember, early on in the comprehensive plan, and our EDC strategic plan consultant, I'm just calling him Kyle, each of them did an independent analysis of how much commercial land use could the city support. They both arrived at very similar conclusions independently, and yet the current flume at the time had something like 10 times land identified for commercial development. It was very unrealistic, and so the new flume was controlled to that. It didn't have to be the exact number that either consultant came up. We just didn't want to be 10 times as dreaming that we could have 10 times the commercial than the market would ever bear. And so, the new flume does reflect more realistic land use patterns. When we come back, we're going to, with staff, we will evaluate what, we'll remind you, how did we do that evaluation? How does the new flume react to that? And then I think in bite sizes, we're going to start looking at the thoroughfares. I think if we try to do the whole city, it's really easy for us to get so overwhelmed by the quantity of acres that we're looking at, and so we'll just, in bite sizes, look at the thoroughfares and make sure that we feel comfortable that our future flume is a viable flume for these lots along the major thoroughfares.
Along with Ms. Cunningham's request, I think the other piece of that is strategically, we need to start talking to landowners. I mean, I find out tonight, and I probably should have known this, but there's a lot of data out there, that these have now even changed over, this new future land use map to not even be commercial. So, now you've, right, that's going to have to go to these landowners and have this discussion, should we want to develop it anyway. So, I mean, I think at some point, we're going to have to bring that whole piece together as well, that's saying, hey, you know, Mr. Marbach, you're not even C3 anymore, right? We now think that you should be this. What are your thoughts, right? And those conversations are going to have to be had, otherwise, we're going to have these continuing problems where somebody looks at the flume and says, hey, it's time to put many houses on this 17 acres, and we're all standing around going, how did you get there, right? So, I think all of this needs to get worked out.
Yeah, and I think you're right, Katie. Once 1103 is fully done and expanded to five lanes, once, nope, once, and it has sidewalks on both sides, storm sewers, bike lanes, you name it, the type of opportunities that are going to be approaching these landowners are going to be phenomenal. So, I think right now, we're tripping over a quarter, you know, to pick up a $100 bill, you know what I mean? So, we're really not, the opportunities that will come along are going to be fantastic. And so, we just got to be patient, and we got to stay on text dot to get that road started in January, as they promised.
And I just want to point out to the, sorry, I just wanted to point out that a master plan is not a zone. And so, while we may have earmarked those for in the future to be community residential, as long as they're commercial, they're going to be commercial until they're rezoned to be something else. So, that would be the next step, would be to start looking, and when you do rezone those properties, that's when the property owner is going to know that there's an intention to change the use.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I mean, we've had some issues with that in the last year and a half, where things on the master plan didn't jive with what the actual zoning is. And I don't want to get involved in a whole argument, again, I'm just saying, if in fact the flume has now changed to take these deep properties that no one's ever been able to develop, or say we've never been able to develop, and they've now changed on the future land use, then we, at least in my mind, owe those landowners the courtesy to go say, look, we now see this different. What are your thoughts? That doesn't mean they're going to change, or they want to change, but at least they need to know what's happening, so that we don't have these misunderstandings of what the future land use map versus what zoning actually is.
Yeah, and actually, I litigated that in 2006 in the Court of Appeals in Austin for City of San Marcos, because their land use plan versus their zoning did not, they didn't, you know, they weren't consistent. And so, the person said, wanted to require a zoning board of adjustment determination based on the land use plan, not the zone. They lost. But what we're doing now is, if there is one-off zoning changes that you do, that I typically have you adjust your master plan as well as the zoning in the same meeting, so that you don't have a conflict in the future. But that would be the next step.
If that's what happens, we need to follow that.
With zoning. Yes, sir.
All right, let's move on. We're going to go on to 12L, discussion feedback on the proposed updates to the FY25-27 Council Strategic Plan Implementation Matrix. And, I'm sorry, that's what we just did.
You just read that one.
Okay, M, discussion on the Palm Field subdivision investigation report, Councilman Hicks.
We all had this discussion a year ago, well, a little over a year ago, when it was brought back to us, and I'd like for it to be reported and let the rest of the city know what happened.
So, what do you have in mind?
Well, I asked to have the report, the investigation report, brought back to be discussed and brought out.
George, do we have a report to look at, or?
So, generally, yeah, I mean, there is a report and investigation, but your charter has specific rules that are kind of reinforce the state law, is that once you have information that was released or communicated as an attorney-client communication or attorney-work product, those things remain confidential until this board, by a majority vote, decides to waive that confidentiality. And so, if Mayor Protim Hicks wants to release the Palm investigation materials, then all we need is an agenda item at the next meeting to move to waive the attorney-client privilege, and in doing so, then the records would become public and available to the public without confidentiality.
You know, this is a two-way street. If you knew that that was the problem, why didn't y'all bring that to me? It's where I could have had it put on here to be voted on. You know, it's a two-way street whenever it comes to this, guys, where, you know, y'all want to hear from us, and we want to hear from y'all. If you knew, because I know Mr. Reed knows exactly what I'm asking for here.
Mr. Hicks?
This is something that went on a year ago, and a lot of us was land-based for this, and we discussed it when Frank Garzio was there, and even Ms. Cunningham said, once everything's done, it needs to come out. That came from her words, out of her mouth.
We're not opposed to bringing this item forward. You submitted a request to the city secretary to discuss it.
Right.
And so, we were prepared to discuss it and for Mr. Hyde to explain the process, but we will have it on the October 29th agenda with the appropriate language by our city attorney for you to take action. And then, based upon that vote, if you approve the release of that confidential information, it will become public record, and anybody can request a copy of it.
I mean, you could even put it on your webpage if you wanted. But I will share with you, Mayor Protim, that when the item came up on the agenda, after the comments that you had made at the previous meeting to put it on a future agenda, I was surprised that it was not on for action. But when I made that comment, it was that you asked for it to be discussed, and so that was my understanding under the circumstance, so.
So to clarify, I could not give that information in public until you release that confidential information to make it public. So what we will have on the agenda is for you to, with the appropriate language, take action to release that, and we'll identify those items by title. And then if you approve that motion, all those documents become public information.
And we can do it by resolution, so immediately upon the release of the attorney-client privilege, it will be available to the public. So at the end of that meeting, it would be available to the public.
All right, next up is M, discussion on Park Valley Road and Hickerville Road drainage from residents' complaints at the council meeting on September 24th. Councilman Hicks.
I think that needs, Mr. Reed's gonna take care of it tomorrow. Please report back to us what takes place with that meeting. We had two residents come and complain about it, and you mentioned in your staff update that you were gonna meet with the ladies, so.
And so that would be to bring back a changed order to pay Sterling more money to go and do work on private property? Is that what that is, Mr. Reed?
Let me clarify. With Mr. Hicks' acknowledgement that I mentioned that Ms. Schneider and I had already had a very pleasant conversation, I committed to meeting her at her property tomorrow morning, and that I said to her, to be very honest, that I could not pay for a second driveway because it's outside the scope of the current contract, just like this other gentleman's property is south of the bridge on Hickerville Road. I said the only way that would happen is if a council member put an agenda item asking for staff to bring back change orders, and the whole council said, yes, we want change orders to add cost to this project. She understands that.
I was talking about the drainage, because two people came up, and two people complained about the drainage, said it's too deep. They had concerns, safety, that's what I was bringing up.
And, and I will be providing an email to council after my visit with her, and that information is what will be in my email, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on to O, discussion on the fees of open house and garage sale signs. Ms. Councilman Hicks.
Well, I thought we'd passed. These anymore for these two particular ones. And I had several different people come to me and approach me that they were getting bills, saying that they had to pay for those permits after, after we had already set up here and said, we're not gonna charge for those. And I just wanted to make sure that, moving forward, that everybody knows that we're not collecting fees for them to be able to put up those signs.
So I will gather all permits that have been applied for, for these types of signs subsequent to council's action, and the effective date of that ordinance, for the fee schedule ordinance, which it took effect October 2nd. And so I will send an email to the council. I'm unaware that that's been done, but I do want to use the facts and share those facts with the city council. So I'm happy to do that.
So somebody decides on a Friday that they're gonna have an open house on Saturday, they say, hey, this is gonna be a great house. An open house, right. They're gonna have to come and get a permit to be able to do an open house? I thought we said, we're not gonna have those fees.
Correct. You remove the fee from the, from the fee schedule.
You're saying they're still gonna have to come through and get a permit to do an open house?
That's a different provision, yes.
And Mayor Protim, what may be the confusion is that a city council action with regards to that type of fee would have to be published before it takes effect. And so between the time of the city council meeting where you took the action, and the time that the publication is complete, the old law, it was still in effect. And so that may be, right, so that may be the bracket when, when they may have felt like you already took action, but they still had to pay a fee.
It filled in the gap, right, between the time that we made the ruling and then the time it was published? Okay, so that's what happened, Joel?
So just to, so just to clarify, am I hearing that you don't have to pay for the permit, but you still need one?
Correct. At some point in the past, a council passed a requirement that these garage sale signs and real estate signs obtain a permit. I don't know the backstory and symbol as to why that happened.
So we need to have that on, like, our next agenda to remove that, because?
I'm happy to do that.
That's insane. We have, I counted up the number of neighborhoods. Just off the top of my head, I counted 30 neighborhoods. Most of them have at least two community garage sales a year. If you have 10 people per community garage sale, that's 600 permits a year.
Buffalo Crossing is doing one this weekend.
Yeah, they all, they all do at least two. So that's a lot of stress on our staff.
I am in total support of doing that. This is not a common.
And even our website says you don't need a permit, so it's confusing.
We, we eliminated the fee. We did not remove the requirement of a permit.
But it says no permit.
It specifically says there's no permit for a garage sale. The fee, the fee for the signs was tied to a permit for the sign.
It's for the sign. That's all I'm, we're talking about signs. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
So I can have a garage sale without a permit, but I have to go get a free permit to put up a sign?
You have to get a permit for the sign, which is off-premise and placed on someone else's property.
That's so silly. Yeah, we need to get rid of that.
Okay, so we'll bring back an agenda item to clarify that.
Yes.
At the next, at the next meeting. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Joel, for bringing this up. And I, we appreciate it. I think our citizens deserve clarity on this, and I don't think they should have to pay for a permit to do a garage sale or an open house.
In case we need to put up for lemonade stands. I'm joking. I am joking.
All right. P, discussion from council members that have attended seminars, events, or meetings. I know, Joel, you've got some stuff to talk about for Houston.
Well, I'm not gonna talk about all of it. I mean, because it's mainly just to discuss who's attended. And I've attended seminars, very good ones. I know that Mrs. Sanchez-Stevens attended a couple of the ones. I know that Mr. Reed and you and Mr. Mahoney were there. A lot of great information that was, was passed along. Then today, I was at Commissioners' Court, not a whole lot there. AAMPO, like I said, as far as sidewalks, we need to be applying for the AAMPO funds for sidewalks. That's all I've got, sir.
Thank you very much. Anything from you, Councilman Hetzel? Anything? Norma? Nothing? Okay.
No, just also went to the TML conference. I think one of the sessions had to deal with water supply. I found that very fascinating, that they were covering Corpus, how they are beginning to desalinate with seawater in order to provide more water for their city. It'll be the first city here in the state of Texas. Obviously, they're, they've been doing desalination in California. They're, Corpus is about 23% capacity in water, so they have to, they've already utilized the easy water that's available. And I just thought it was interesting that the effect even in the Rio Grande Valley of the drought has shut down a lot of the sugar cane farms over there, and it's affecting our Texas agriculture. And being that we highly rank as a state of Texas, you know, in the GDP, I believe it's either six or eight, I'm trying to remember either one, that six in global, global GDP, that, that our agriculture is suffering because of the lack of water supply because of the drought. So that was a very fascinating session, along with others. I just wanted to pass that along. So the state of water is critical, you know, for, for cities in Texas.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens, yeah, I too found the TML conference in Houston very valuable. A lot of good sessions, a lot of good networking opportunities. And so I think it was a very valuable experience. Councilwoman Cunningham, got anything for you?
So I spoke to a Girl Scout troop about the elections. It was for one of their badges. And I have another Girl Scout troop I'm meeting with this week to go over the same type of stuff, city council, local government, and elections. Their questions were really smart. Not that I anticipated they would be dumb questions, but they were very, like, deep questions with, they paid, kids pay attention to a lot more than what you think. And so their questions were very thoughtful, very thought-provoking. And so I always enjoy doing that. They were a really great group of girls. The town hall meeting on Monday was really well organized. Thank you for that.